Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 13th, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the website. We'll begin at 7:03. We'll come to order. And first item on the agenda, MS4 compliant stormwater.
We, Mr. Chairman, the town's been working with Comprehensive Environmental Inc. to satisfy some of the requirements for our NIFTies permit, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, MS4 municipal separate storm sewer system. So, we've been working with CEI for quite a while. We did do our annual report, but now we have some things that we have to do, and that's why Nick's here. I distributed some information at the last meeting. You wanted some questions and answers, an overview of why we need to do certain things with respective bylaws.
Yeah.
And that's why Nick's here. He's going to give us a little overview and a little Q and A session after that.
Okay. All right. Come on up, Nick.
All right, thank you. Is that okay?
Sure, that's fine. All right. Would you just give your name for the record?
My name is Nick Christoforey with Comprehensive Environmental, CEI. I'd like to thank the board for having me down tonight. So, as Bill mentioned, we've been working together as a town for a couple of years now. The MS4 permit, for those that don't know, was originally released back in 2003 and outlined six different minimum measures that communities need to do. Essentially, it's public education and outreach, addressing non-stormwater or illicit discharges in the stormwater system, construction erosion sediment controls, post-construction stormwater management, and good housekeeping pollution prevention. So, the original 2003 permit was about eight pages or so long. It had a lot of requirements in it, but didn't really get into very many specifics about what needed to get done. So, that 2003 permit was supposed to be replaced in 2008 by a new permit. Instead, it was not replaced until 2018. So, this is most of the new permit. So, whereas 2003 permit didn't have a lot of specifics, this is very, very, very specific about what needs to get done. It is an unfunded mandate per EPA, so there is no funding that EPA gives communities to meet these requirements, however, communities are required to meet certain items. I will hand out, it should be noted that of the, of these requirements we discuss tonight, you only are required to do these within your urbanized area. So, there's a little figure on the back of these I will hand out. This is just a selection of a PowerPoint presentation that I, that I did for another community, but it's applicable to you guys. So, Bill mentioned, communities are going to need to have certain regulatory requirements, regulatory changes that they're going to need to make. So, I think the purpose of this meeting is really to provide sort of an overview on what will need to get done for different communities. So, if we look through this one, there are...
Are you going to be crazy?
There's a name on that, yeah. I was going to get you another one.
Are you, you can volunteer, you can take over my...
No, thank you.
Area.
Sit right next to me.
I'm going to go right here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Nick Christoforey with CEI.
Hi.
Okay, let me go back to...
Yeah, give him, give him one.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So, there are three regulatory mechanisms that the town needs to have in place. The very first one is the illicit discharge detection elimination one. You already have that in place, you already meet permit requirements, you don't need to do anything else. The next two kind of go together. So, the first one has to do with requiring erosion and sediment controls during construction. So, under the permit, communities need to have erosion and sediment controls in place. You need to require site plan review before construction, site inspections, and then a couple other minor things. This applies to any construction project that disturbs one acre or more within your regulated area and that goes to your stormwater MS4 system. So, communities have the opportunity to do this in, in a number of different ways. The easiest for regulatory standpoint, but also the most comprehensive is...
Let, let me just jump in here. So, if you look at your third slide, there's a map of the town.
Yeah.
We're talking about within that shade, red shaded area.
Yes.
Okay.
So, that is where you're required to do these requirements under the permit. Communities can do this one of two ways. You can either implement everything townwide, which makes it a little bit easier from an implementation standpoint because it's just a blanket coverage. Alternatively, you can do it with this, within your urbanized area. The thing that makes that tough is your urbanized area will change based on census data. So, for instance, when the 2020 census data is released, your community, your regulated area will in all likelihood get bigger. It can never get smaller, it can only get bigger.
Unless everybody leaves town.
Uh, yes, I suppose, although there is some, anyway, yeah. I wouldn't plan on it getting smaller. So, in order to do it within your regulated area, you would need to do something like making an overlay district or something like that. So, I'm just throwing these different options that are out there. Furthermore, technically, you only need to require these for developments of an acre or more that go to your stormwater MS4 system. So, the problem with that is how do you figure out, someone has to make that determination of does it go to this stormwater MS4 system? And it's that someone making that determination, which can be, you know, challenging. You'd have to define who is in charge of doing that at some, some way. I mean, you can do CONCON. The problem is with CONCON, they only typically regulate areas that are within wetland jurisdiction. So, they don't necessarily get...
But they can also adopt for stormwater.
More management.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, when was the last town that I did that conservation was for stormwater? Okay, remember, there was a bunch of them, though, that they regulate under Conservation Commission.
Local?
Mm-hmm.
How many towns you work, towns you work with?
Uh, fifteen to twenty.
You have a list of which towns have it as a need conservation versus planning board?
Not too many have another conservation for that reason. Usually, it ends up being planning board. I don't know if I have that.
If anybody needs one. Does the DPW volunteer at all? I mean, that's who maintains the stormwater management system.
So, it's up to the, the town is the regulated entity under MS4, so it's up to the town to figure out who it is. Typically, DPW is responsible for catch basin cleaning, street sweeping, and those kinds of things. When it comes down to the reviewing of plans and those kinds of things, typically, it goes to a regulatory board. Planning, sometimes building. You know, what you will end up doing is, like, for instance, Conservation Commission, you can make it that, you know, planning board is the regulated authority, and they have final say over everything. But typically, you're not going to want to have someone coming through planning board and conservation. So, you could write it into your bylaws or your regulations that say, if you go through the conservation process, you submit a form or something like that that says, you know, dear planning board, I got approval through conservation, they signed off on everything. That's fine.
It was Canton.
Okay.
It's under conservation.
So, this matrix that I just handed out, we did sort of a cursory review on pages three through, or two through four, rather, of where the town stands under the erosion and sediment controls. And in general, the town is very similar to most of the other communities I work with. There's sort of this, this patchwork of regulations in place that, you know, covers subdivision regulations for some of it, and site plan review regulations for some of it, and wetlands protection for some of it, and zoning. The challenge kind of moving forward and doing a lot of this is making everything point together. So, basically, what the permit is regulating is anything that disturbs an acre or more, depending on how you want to do the jurisdictional area within the urbanized area or not. Everything needs to get reviewed by planning or someone within town, and they need to hit these different things.
Question on that, that project that's going on that didn't come before us, SUSE VA, would that be impacted by this?
It's already underway. They would have filed a construction general permit, so they should have. I think we checked that, Nick, actually, at one point. And I think they did file a construction general permit.
Because they don't come in...
Under NIFTies. But this is, again, before our bylaws are in place.
Right. So, I'm saying if one was to come from the future, where they don't come before the planning board for any, anything, how would that be regulated?
Would this be a zoning...
Is this a 40B project?
Yeah. Would this be a zoning...
How does that all come into play? Because there's a, I mean...
Um, I am not sure on that. From what last I heard, they were still required to hit local, not local, okay. But this is, well, then they may not have to.
No.
They're not required to hit local bylaws.
But they still have to file with the Fed.
They would still have to file a notice of intent and a stormwater pollution prevention plan under EPA's construction general permit.
But would they file one? I mean, we'd have no oversight on it, which isn't right.
You don't have that.
You're letting one do this and another do that. How is that going to work?
Yes, yes, because it's 40B and their, their...
Well, part of it's, I mean, you have it...
But one same as in, yeah.
You haven't updated your zoning bylaws or your regs in...
This was very, yeah, this was very, oh, you're talking...
No, ours.
Oh, okay.
Our zoning bylaws and our regs haven't been updated in ten years.
Yeah.
So...
Well, moving forward, I mean, since we're going to be going through a lot of these different things, like sub, subdivision regulations, and in an attempt to kind of unify these things, if there are things you want to change or add, now's the time. So, just something that, you know, kind of think about. But, you know, in general, kind of like we said, you know, you need to have, you need to review anything that's an acre or more. You need to have erosion and sediment controls in place during construction. You need to have procedures for site inspections during construction, procedures for site plan review. So, that's pretty much what is laid out within the permit, and it's, it is up to the town as to how that is done, and even more, the even, like, the specifics and everything for a lot of this. You need to have, for instance, you need to have procedures in place for inspecting sites during construction, but it does not say what those procedures need to be, or even how often you need to go out and inspect these sites. It just says they need to be in place. Now, communities have done that, those types of things, same with the plan reviews in different ways. You know, one, you can put the burden entirely on the town and say, okay, planning board or building or zoning, whoever, has to review all these one acre or more disturbances. Alternatively, you can, you can require hiring a third-party engineer or a third-party inspector and put the burden on a developer or a homeowner or whoever. It's entirely up to the town. There's no right or wrong way to do it. Questions so far in that? Go back to this and...
I have a question.
What's your question?
I know when, when we brought a bylaw before town meeting in the past, one of the questions that came up, and I don't know if Nick has an answer to this, but was about, you know, cutting trees, leaving the stumps. You know, let's say I just clear an acre, cut the trees, but not the stumps, does that constitute land disturbance?
Good question, and you're not the first person to ask that. My take is that purely cutting a tree is not land disturbance. However, I think you might be hard-pressed to show that you can go and clear an acre or more of trees with heavy equipment and not adversely affect that land and disturb it. You know, I mean, you're going to go out and you're going to, it's going to be all torn up, and something like that would, would probably have to be, have to come before the town, and someone would have to make a decision on that.
Don't they go forestry permit?
They have a forestry permit.
Okay.
And bypasses everything.
Well, one acre, yeah.
With one acre?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they're doing...
And then they can go right through wetlands.
Ten acres.
Yep. They're allowed to.
Okay, so same thing, so it's like an agricultural use.
Correct. Forestry permit.
I mean, we have a lot of agriculture, yeah. So, they're exempted. Yeah, you don't have a definition of disturbance?
Nope. EPA does not provide a definition of disturbance under the permit.
Open end.
I don't make the rules.
That's good.
I don't make the rules.
Nope. Just explain to us.
I don't make the rules.
Okay.
Okay. Back to this blue sheet here. We're going to go number three, post-construction. So, this, this particular item, this is brand-new under the new permit. So, I'm going to hand these out now, and if you go to page forty-three, I guess, where it says stormwater management, new development, second page in the thing. Man, you're good at this.
I'm used to it. In and out. There you go.
So, what percentage of the town is actually going to be susceptible to this?
The whole red area.
This regulation?
We're now in the red area, yeah.
So, we're trying to, yeah, but so, we limit it to that, then we limit it to something else, then we limit it to one acre, then we can just limit the number of people that could possibly be affected because it's new disturbance, right?
Correct.
Not redevelopment.
So, well, it's, it's disturbance of one acre or more, redevelopment or...
So, if you pave an acre of a parking lot, you know, that would trigger it likely.
Yeah, if you clear land and you, and you pave it, you make it to one acre parking lot.
So, if I have, you know, houses, and then they tear down the houses and they pave a parking lot and put a strip mall in, would that trigger it?
Yes. Yes.
But, so, so right now, you're saying either you go with an overlay district that's in red, that's shown in this, in your map here.
MS4.
No, it's...
What? I think it's that.
This one?
Yep.
Yeah, MS4.
Yep. Or we do the whole, blanket the whole time, the same bylaw.
Yes. It's up to you.
Which is now all...
But that's not what we have to do.
You don't have to do it, it is entirely up to the community. I mean, in general, I would recommend the whole town because it makes things a little bit easier, but it's up to you.
Makes it easier, but, but on the, on the flip side, the red area on that map is already driven by population density, so theoretically, it's already developed. Now, there are holes in that model that you get large tracts of undeveloped land, but nonetheless, the majority of that red area is already disturbed and developed. So, if you limit it to the red area, which is less than a quarter of the town, okay, then you, chances are, a developer's not going to go in that area, particularly in Douglas, where we have other areas that will be developed, and then it wouldn't trigger.
I mean, and what's the zoning for that area? I can't even read, like, one street on here. So, there are two acres, there's a...
There's VR, yeah, there's VR, there's the industrial land, which is up on North Street, which is North Village, and then there's on the backside, looks to like, but, two acres, which is going out towards Manchon Road. There's down South Street.
But the rest is...
South Street.
Woodland.
Yep. Woodland.
Yeah, you got there crossing, Shady Knolls Estates, the south side of sixteen, basically from the common, all the way to the schools.
Maple. Maple Road going out to Monroe.
So, with this overlay, if we went with overlay, their property card is going to be labeled as a MS4 drainage discharge one, right? So, then that, that can be flagged, and they have to file an application for review, and that's the end of the story.
Well, it'd be no different than any other bylaw we have, whether they trigger it or they don't, you know.
But going to the whole town would extend the regulatory footprint to a degree that's counter to the, what we're trying to encourage development. It would be a, you know, people would come in and say, geez, you know, I'm going to do this, too, maybe I won't do it here.
Right. Totally, totally fine.
So, we should probably stick with the...
I'm the least to meet the requirements.
That's correct.
Totally fine. Yep. You're entirely fine.
And the easiest way, one-page application, is what I'm doing, meeting this requirement.
There's no, in the past, there's been compensation for us adopting these? There's nothing tied to this.
There's no compensation to the town to adopt this?
It's a mandate, no.
Unfunded mandate.
It's a unfunded mandate.
Right, so why go beyond that?
Totally fine, totally fine. Yep, okay. That's the way, that's the way we will plan on it.
What's the timeline of adoption?
That is based on census data from, that EPA provided. It's essentially, it's non-negotiable. I spent 1.3 hours one day trying to figure out how they determined it, and I gave up.
1.3?
No, yeah, it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
If it did 1.4, you would have...
Right? Right?
What's, what's the stipulation on adoption?
Schedule?
Schedule wise?
This one that we're talking about now, this post-construction one, needs to be done by June 30th, 2020. So, you have, you have a long time, but...
Not a long.
Right.
By the time, you know, if you do...
The construction ones by 2020.
The construction one, yeah, the construction one is, is supposed to be adopted previously, but you have a lot of stuff in place now, and honestly, to, to expect communities to do that within the first year, when they're just figuring out where they're at, to me, is impossible, or nearly impossible. So, what we'll do is, I'm meeting with you now because this process can be just that, a process. I mean, I think you guys have a fall town meeting, too, right?
We do.
So, we could try and hit that. That, that may be a stretch, but, you know, we can talk about that afterwards.
And we could put an effective date in there that coincides with the deadline date, effective on such and such date, so...
Yep. Yep.
You know, so people will be put on notice, and they won't be surprised it's coming.
Does, does that have to hit annual, or can it take a...
No, it can, it can go on either.
You know, what we, what we would typically do for something like this is we would look at doing a relatively short bylaw that goes for town meeting, you know, a few pages long, applicability, definitions, who's responsible, enforcement actions, et cetera, et cetera. And then you have, you know, planning board has the authority to adopt regulations that go along with this.
And it references the larger version.
And then you have your bigger regulation volume that goes along with it, that doesn't have to go before town meeting, they can just put a notice.
So, it's a reference within the, the meeting.
Yep, exactly, yep. So, then you'd have that bylaw point to it, and then probably, you'd probably have to change your subdivision and site plan regulations to point to that as well, just so everything...
What happens if towns don't meet the June 30th deadline?
You, you are technically non-compliant, and you could be fine. You know, if it comes to July 1st and it's not in place, I, I would be surprised if EPA comes down and says, show me your bylaw. But technically...
Towns that can't...
We'd have to do an annual report, Les, and as part of that, well, I'm letting you know, as part of that annual report, I already got a notice from the EPA about it. If, if we, we get flagged in our annual report, if we, if we are not compliant, we have to say whether or not we're compliant, so, you know, that'll be a red flag, basically. So, I'd rather avoid that.
No, just a question. Not every town's turning things around quick.
Yep. Yep. You know, there will be some towns that will get this done by June next year, there will be others that won't.
Yeah. Just fairness to the media.
Yep. Yep. But this one here, this post-construction one, this one is substantially different, and there are requirements for retaining certain storm volumes on-site and infiltrating it, removal of pollutant loads, like total suspended solids and phosphorus, and, you know, this, this will be, this is much more than was required previously.
We already do some of this stuff, though. Anyway, post-form...
No, this is more rigorous than what we currently do. This is, this is very...
We do as-built, some of those, as-built, long-term ONMs, we do those.
Good.
Those, too.
Good.
But we have performance standards also.
But now it's, now developers or builders are going to have to show that, okay, you know, submit calculations, go along with this. Okay, I added half an acre of impervious area, this is how I'm mitigating those impacts. I'm directing 25% between infiltration base...
There's got to be periodic reporting.
We don't do that right now?
There's periodic reporting?
Or our stormwater calculations, and they do a proposed...
During the design, we do.
Construction.
If it's required, yes.
Yeah, post-construction.
So, if it's triggered, yes. Post-construction, we have a plan, yes.
Oh, no.
We don't get the inspection reports, for example.
Right. So, some of it will just be, some of it will just be simply formalizing some of that, that receipt of information, like, you know, basically, towns have to report on pretty much everything as part of their annual reports now, which you do the end of September. So, it'll be making sure that everything goes to someone who's in charge of keeping track of these items.
Sounds good.
So, if we go back to this and just the flip side, I think we talked about most of this already. You know, the one acre within the urbanized area, deadlines we talked about, and we even talked about most of the stuff on the last, the last slide. So, you know, I think moving forward, what we'll be looking at doing is doing a more comprehensive review of the regulations, and I'll be working with Bill to do redline markups, you know, look at sample bylaws and look at recommendations, and he'll probably be, I don't want to speak for you, but probably acting as kind of a liaison between the board and going back and forth and see.
I know the board wants to take a minimalistic approach.
Yep.
Generally, that's my feeling, the town certainly. So, that's going to basically be my position.
So, you know, that's what I wanted to cover. I don't want to, you know, beat this thing to the ground, take up more of your time, so, you know, any more questions for me?
No, thanks. Right forward.
Change our zoning bylaws and our regs?
I think we can get done what is required by the deadline.
I think so. I think so. I mean, that's why I've been meeting with pretty much everyone, you know, now. Because it can take time, you know, I mean, you got to hit, when's your town meeting?
Oh, in May?
May.
May.
So, you get, so you get to have it done by...
We won't make the fall meeting, I don't think, but we can maybe make the annual.
Sure. Yep.
On the fall, all the following fall, but we could have it...
Exactly. So, you got to be done by March, you got to have a final review by February, draft by, final draft by December, and...
Right.
You guys know it.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
You're talking 2020.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
And to keep it minimal, is the thing, keep it in that one area.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Some native Christofores? Any family there? Any natives?
No, Plymouth, Plymouth, Mass.
Dozens of families.
Really?
Some native, oh my God. Principals and experts.
My, my family's from Plymouth, Mass.
It's a big town.
It is a big town.
Have a seat.
Thank you, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad you got asked the question. All right, 7:15. Lakeside zoning, D L T A, project housing.
Maybe it's sheriff. I don't know.
You want to sit here?
I don't.
Here.
Yeah. Get a bullseye.
So, I'm Emily Globbitts, I'm from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, C M R P C.
You're our delegate?
Yes. Jake?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we have Emily.
Were you at the annual dinner?
I wasn't invited yet.
Oh, no.
Yeah, you didn't. You might not get this email.
Oh, okay. Next year.
We'll give it to you.
So I'm going to be talking about two projects that we're going to be working on through December. The first is the regional housing needs study and community housing workshops. So this is a regional project that we're working on with the towns of Douglas as well as Oxbridge and Mendon, who are also similar, smaller towns that have limited capacity to engage in housing planning. So these towns are also under a lot of pressure to address the issue of housing and really need a better understanding of the existing conditions and development trends and kind of the challenges and opportunities associated with housing. So the plan is to collect most recent data on housing, population trends in the three towns, to gain this understanding and look at future projections of where the towns are headed. Looking at population like income trends, housing permits, affordability, housing costs, type and age of housing, all those kinds of things. And then following this data collection and analysis process, we're going to be doing a regional workshop to collect community perspectives and develop strategies for further action. So really seeing where people are at regards to housing. So this, we're aiming for October. And, yeah, so this project's really a starting point to see which direction the region is kind of headed in and what steps make the most sense to take to address the housing issues, whether that's pursuing developing different like housing bylaws or going forward with the housing production plan, the 40B kind of route. So we'll see.
New schools.
I think some of the communities you referenced and stuff like that have looked at the lot sizes and stuff like that for the density. Because I know, I mean, that would trigger developer to basically go into a 40B route if, you know, depending on what the lots are.
Yep.
So, but that's what you're looking at when you talk about development trends and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing, the other thing we think we talked about was, what you guys did was basically was talking about the infrastructure and the development of roads, size of roads and stuff like that.
Yeah. I might have an MAPC.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
I'll send you a copy. It's pretty good.
Was that the recent one? Very recent?
Oh, 2000, I shared it with the board.
Oh, okay.
It was 2012.
Oh, okay.
It was a good, because it talked about...
Or expedited permitting, too. And maybe do a residential versus like commercial development, the 43D expedited permitting. So do something for residential expedited permitting.
Yeah.
And for flexible zoning in lots with town water, town sewer.
Or one of them both.
I don't think we have an issue with people wanting to build houses around here. It's just our zoning is very restrictive. And I know Oxford is three acres.
Yeah.
So you've got long, 300 feet of frontage, three acres. That's not really spurring development.
Yeah.
Especially if you have like, you know, town water, let's say in Oxbridge, and you've got probably three acres. Because, I mean, with Title V, you have 40,000 square feet.
Yeah. Is there water and sewer like throughout the town?
No.
No, no.
We also need help with that, too.
Yeah.
It's always a big...
Very limited. And is that basically, you know, when you have those large parcels that have the...
Lots, frontage.
The zoning restrictions like that.
Why are you going to run something for 600 feet?
Right.
Pick up two lots.
Two, yeah.
Doesn't make any sense.
And then that basically impacts all those ratepayers who are tied to that, all the sewer and water repairs. So either they're going to be burdened with the infrastructure of upgrading their, you know, because they're going to hit with the federal regulations of maintaining their sewer plant and water plant with chemicals, or that gets shifted to the taxpayers.
Right.
And now the community of the taxpayers pays it up. It's one or the other. So either, you know, we, you know, communities have to update their zoning and their bylaws to move flexible.
Yeah.
Or, you know, the shift is going to happen at some point where that cost has to be shifted to the taxpayers more.
Yeah. Or existing developed lots having another accessory apartment type of thing.
I think Oxbridge is against it, right?
Yeah. So that's another problem.
No accessory apartments? None.
They can't take care of their parents.
Where Sutton...
You mean, they don't allow the...
None, nothing.
And it is allowed here?
It's allowed here detached.
50 feet.
It is now.
Attached or detached.
Attached or detached.
Done about 10 years.
Yeah. But I know, I think Sutton allows it that after, or they're looking into the regulations that after it becomes an in-law suite, the next use would be as like a one-bedroom rental and something like that.
We don't...
Yeah, we don't, no. No, but that's just other communities.
Yeah. I would not support that in Douglas because I don't feel that people should be putting another house on a lot to rent out to somebody else. I'm okay with...
I don't disagree with you, Ernie. I'm just talking about what...
Yeah, but...
I mean, where we go, we go from one end of the spectrum where Oxford doesn't allow them, to we do allow them.
Right.
To other towns are even going in.
Yeah.
There's a housing crisis, they're saying. And we're preventing the housing crisis from being solved with our zoning.
I totally disagree.
You're not alone, either.
I totally disagree.
Same story across...
Yeah.
We're being forced to change, and we don't even have a say in it, the way we have a set of rules and regulations governing the development of town. And 40Bs come in, we have no, the planning board has absolutely no say in anything that comes in that's 40B. All the rules, regulations and restrictions that everybody else has to apply for, they don't. And that, to me, is just wrong.
Right.
Well, it was a failed act, 40B.
I think...
And the friendly 40B. It pretty much pressured towns to bend to the will of those developers instead of using it for what it was supposed to be used for.
And the 40R, does that give the town a little bit of flexibility?
Friendly.
Friendly, yes.
So you have to work out for you. You have to look at affordable housing. It's going to be fun. And you have new lots that are affordable for people to buy houses on.
Yeah.
Everything is super expensive.
Except the lots are affordable relative to other towns that are not right here, right? I mean, if you go into the Needums and Adix and... Everything west here is affordable relative within a half an hour here.
And no water, no sewer.
And you still don't meet your 10%.
No utilities.
No, you never would.
You never will. It's an unattainable goal.
Right, right.
So that's why I'm opposed to 40Bs and that type of development.
Yeah. And then also to build on that, I just want to mention that CMRPC also applied for a grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to continue this research. And so hopefully, we should be hearing back really soon about that by the end of the summer.
And you know what regulations they're placing upon new construction for residential homes, right? For IECC, International Energy Conservation Code. They're requiring geothermal, split, mini splits, something renewable. Even though we use the least, our group as residential uses the least amount of energy in Massachusetts, comparatively speaking to the labs and...
Right.
Industrial and commercial. But they're targeting residential. So it makes it even harder. There's even more of a burden. Yeah. It's a drop in the ocean.
Right.
But they're, they're making these regulations that, like solar, wind, so you could have a windmill in your backyard and that would meet the requirements of the new building code. Yeah. It's, it's really not good. There's somebody lobbying and placing these regulations on these new construction. It makes it impossible to build an affordable house.
So you on the front line should help us question.
Now that you're talking about environmental, it's, it's not good. It's very expensive.
And it's unfunded.
Yeah.
But mandated.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something we'll definitely look into.
It should be individual choice.
I mean, the energy code with the hers and stuff like that is, was something that they did in the 70s and then they realized they tightened it up too much and then...
Well, it went through town meeting, remember? The funding that came from the town and then...
A stretch.
Stretch energy.
Versus Lord or Nutt testing. So, I mean, there, it's kind of contradictory, what you're trying to do and what is actually reality. Like, I don't know if you could even make any strides towards making housing affordable and spurring housing for people.
If they have to be implemented, right?
Yeah.
It is counterintuitive.
Establishing a housing affordability trust. It's definitely a lot of things, so we'll look into it. Also, working with the other towns, too, is an option. That's why we're focusing on a regional thing, like, so you're not alone in this.
They all, same issue.
Yeah. So we'll keep you updated on if we get that grant or not, hopefully. So, so we can really take this starting point and move forward with it and help you guys develop bylaws or whatever you want to do for a strategy to move forward and taking things to town meeting, so.
The trick is if you get a bylaw, then we can then eliminate the 40B. That would be a great bylaw. Protect us from that, you'd be a hero. Yeah.
It's not like how many have we had.
We made all the bylaws we want.
But it doesn't protect us.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
Because they're going to come in and say, no, we don't...
Yeah, I know, like, a lot of people are thinking, cost is getting so expensive, so people are moving out. But I don't know how many people are coming here.
More and more.
Yeah.
Every month.
Okay, so...
Thank you so much.
Any more questions on that project?
No.
I can give you my business grade, too.
Yes.
Emily, right?
Emily, yep.
Okay.
Okay. So the next one is the Lakeside Residential Model Bylaw. So we're working on this with Bill. So we tried to reach out to Rutland and Westbrook Fields and we're still, they kind of have their hands tied in other projects right now. So we might just kind of focus on Douglas for this one. But it's going to essentially be a model for other communities because they have been having this issue. Even across Massachusetts, it's not just this region. So Douglas would really be setting example for the rest of the state.
I wonder what happened about that.
I think Webster also passed it first.
Really? Yeah, I'll have to look at them.
Yeah, take a look at Webster.
Yeah.
Webster already passed there.
That'd be awesome. So Trey, you're all familiar with the issue with the Lakeside zoning.
Yeah.
The parcels were laid out before the current zoning was in place and weren't intended for full-time residential use. So CMRPC wants to work with the town to identify what the issues are, map the existing parcels, identify constraints to development, and essentially produce a model bylaw as the final product. And if this all is successful and you want to move forward with like a Phase 2 implementation of the bylaw, we can also do that for the next round of DTA funding. So that would be after December, like...
How much did we get for this one?
This one's $7,000.
Okay, that was the regional, but we only, it's only for Douglas?
No, eh, we...
It was 15 originally.
Yeah, and then it got...
15 originally for multi-town, but it sounds like we're the only town.
Yeah, I think it's really good until we end up being Douglas, so.
Well, we do have DTA funding for doing some more economic development studies.
Yeah, but if we're the only town and it sets a model, it seems like there needs to be more money towards it.
I mean, or expedited schedule.
They've already laid it out. They probably would contribute because they've...
I mean, we're like dragging it.
They've already got implemented, but they might be dealing with issues that were more...
About half a year?
Yeah. I'll have to reach out to them.
When do they get awarded the money?
Yeah, when is your, when is your money awarded and when can you start?
Uh, we're starting right away, yeah. Absolutely. So we were kind of just wondering what are any concerns that the planning board has related to this issue? And also your preferred approach to who we should be working with is just Bill or a subcommittee of the planning board or a bylaw review group?
Signed by law, subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
Signed bylaws?
Subcommittee.
They have flashbacks.
Yeah. I mean, would that expedite this process? Because it seems like it's like...
Taken forever.
Really taken forever.
Well, Bill's got stormwater, too, stuff to do.
And I don't know why we're doing economic development. Did we vote on that?
I...
What? I don't think so.
Economic development?
I wasn't...
No, no, no. That, that's something that the EDC and the N office decided. But they didn't take it from this...
Yeah. Where's the, where's the rest of the money? Of the 15 grand?
No, that, you have to understand how it works. They make an application to a committee.
Yeah.
And their initial application included us along with two other towns. So they would have had to spend time analyzing those two other towns. So, you know, I'm not sure how, I'm sure our dollar amount probably didn't change. I don't know.
I thought they were awarded, I thought you were awarded 15,000. That was the last...
We, no.
They were submitting 15,000 for three towns.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they were given...
And the committee who decides ended up only giving 7,000. And so, and then it doesn't look like we're going to be working with those towns anyway, so.
And then where, what about this affordable housing thing?
That's another DTA project. That's 10,000.
And that's, we just joined up because or we have to or?
CMRPC reached out for a regional study to the town. I brought it down to the end hall office and they authorized it, so they filed the application.
Okay, so we didn't know anything about that?
Right.
Okay. All right. So this, of these tasks five, so that doesn't even get us to getting a prepared bylaw for town meeting floor.
Yeah, it'll be a draft. And then you can continue to apply for DTA funding in January. And then we could use that time between January and May's the town meeting to help you implement that.
So did you see the draft that was already circulated, like last year?
You sent that over. Yeah.
We gave them a hard copy and an email copy.
Okay. So we can't work off of that draft and...
You're talking about Webster?
Expedite, yeah, expedite. No, a previous one for Douglas.
And then we could also use Webster as a...
Yeah, guideline, that's what it was used. So are you using that draft or you're just starting from scratch?
Well, they provided it and, you know, I have one meeting with Ron and Emily and basically provided that, gave them an overview of what we're trying to achieve, which is, and my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to identify small lots that are pre-existing with existing structures on them that predate zoning to give an overlay district perhaps that would give them relief from a zoning perspective. So whether it's side yard setbacks or whatever the issue is.
I don't know if you'd be able to do it with an overlay. It'll be spotty. I think you'd be better off adopting the bylaw area for the zone, like residential. And then from there, you can map out...
So clearly, there'll be a number of steps throughout this process. I think the first step is going to be identify, you know, where these issues exist.
But we started, when did we start working on this project?
A week ago.
Okay, this is from June 13th. This email.
Um, yeah. We haven't worked on it too, too much because we've been trying to, yeah, get in contact with Bill and get here, so it's just been a busy time here, Russ.
How many meetings has the board had since then, anyway?
One, two, two maybe?
Two, I don't think two.
One, one since then, yeah, right. We had one meeting in July.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
I just don't want this to be, like, I don't want this to be another like rezone.
Is the issue the scheduling?
Well, getting, we're not even going to get anything that we can use for town meeting till after December.
Right, and then we need to apply for some grant money, right? In order to finish it up, no?
If you want to modify the scope, and Emily, maybe you can talk to Ron about this.
Accelerate the scope.
Yeah.
You know, then certainly the committee should, should discuss it and then suggest what they want the scope to be. If, if that's not reasonable, I don't know what the rush is personally. And I think it's, I think time is better spent getting a...
It's not a rush is to get something that is presentable and this is not going to give it to us. Like, like the thing that we did for the rezoning, like we spent money and time and effort and it didn't, nothing happened.
Nothing happened with it.
I don't want that to happen again.
The rezoning.
When we're talking about split parcels.
Yeah.
The split parcels.
Split parcels and the...
Yeah, revising the zoning map.
Is it split, commercial, residential?
You remember that?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. When we were talking about parcels that had, were split zoning.
Oh, that, that, that.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Let's just sort of refresh it. So, we, we, we worked on that for about three or four meetings?
That's generous.
What'd you say?
Yeah.
I brought it to the board, we discussed it at one meeting.
No, but we, we had a couple of cycles on it.
Oh, yeah, we had three meetings at least, you laid the ta, the map out and then.
Not one meeting.
The takeaway on this, you know, I was hearing you, and I'm not versed as versed as anybody else on this, but that the takeaway is that there's a draft in place and also Webster has something in place. And you should have all that because like as an architect, someone gives me drawings and I get stuff. It helps to move things along and so I would hope that helps you guys.
Yeah, any previous planning is.
So, you have all of that.
Um, yeah, we have the draft bylaw and then I'm gonna look at Webster.
It's not a draft bylaw, it's, it's a proposal that went to town.
Right, but it, but it's something that we have worked on in the past.
So, what do we, what do we do this, make it easier? Because I know Bill's gonna work on the stormwater piece and there's gonna be some cycles there. Why don't we do a subcommittee, try to put some effort in that via email back and forth with her, get some spend, she can take a look at Webster because Webster's already, I don't, I don't think.
Let's quantify what the two issues are because Emily has to bring this back. I think I'm hearing schedule and scope. Is that correct?
That's everything.
Yeah. So, so what I would suggest is Emily, you and Ron, talk about those two things and then submit, submit a propos, a revised proposal to the board for your review.
Sure, yeah, I'll send that over.
Yeah, you know what we're saying, yeah.
Just to keep you kind of more in touch with what we're working on.
Wait another month, get it, to emails us or something, ahead of time.
When it gets here, it gets here.
I just don't wanna use the funding that we've been given and not accomplish anything. I'd rather accomplish something with the money if we have to pick something else that's actually gonna get completed. I don't know about the housing thing either, I don't know what's gonna come up on that.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that's an example, like, I'd rather see something actually moving forward, progressing, making the town better instead of like spinning our wheels and just saying, oh, we'll have a final draft and, or a rough draft, I don't know.
That's Lakeside Zoning School, I mean, that would be good on the field.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be on the subcommittee?
I'm familiar with Webster's, you know, Lakeside Residential and I was on the panel for three and a half years. It, it's helped the community and I think it's, would be beneficial to other communities who run across this.
So, that means you're on the subcommittee.
He is the chair.
So, you're saying you're on the subcommittee?
I'll work with, I'll work with her.
That'd be awesome.
I'm familiar with it.
Anybody else wanting to take part in this?
I did sign.
I did the sign too. I did, I, no, I did the sign.
Fix it, Jason, baby.
Yes.
The new beans, you know.
Awesome.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Got me on that.
It's cause I live on one of those.
It's all right, no, me and Jake, there we go. And I'm on, perfect, that's what you need.
What's your name?
Les. Jake, he's the rap, the old rap. Nice meeting you. Okay, well, meetings at the pubs?
All right.
Thank you.
Guys, why don't you guys, that's fine.
Thanks so much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, all ladies, very much.
Oh, the sign, that's.
Yeah.
At least four.
Oh, yeah, Wednesdays.
Yeah.
I only remember it was already brought either a sign or a picture of.
I'm surprised Sutton is on board, this Lake.
That's something I remember about that.
Ready, boys?
Yes.
All right, seven thirty, we have an A and R.
There we go.
Somebody here to present that?
Byron.
Byron's here, okay. All right, A and R plans, Patricia and Hillary, C Manny, twenty-seven Webster.
Marie gave me three copies at the same time.
My name is Byron Andrews, I'm with Andrew Survey and Engineering, I'm representing Patricia Manning today. I have full-size plans, unfortunately I wasn't able to do the small-size plans tonight, I was kind of in a rut getting out.
That's okay.
It's all right. Trying to beat the rain? What's the, yeah, can I take that off paper now?
I just don't know.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's good.
We got the small one.
Can I have one Byron? I just need to check.
It's in our packet too, there's a lot, here, right here.
All right, anybody ready?
So, Mrs. Manning, owns this parcel here, I've already on this sheet in green, it's the entirety of the property.
How many acres is it?
Uh, let's question, we've got three, four point three, five point three, about five point seven, I would say. Oh, plus this, five, six, so it's about seven acres in total.
Seven acres, okay.
There's an existing house here on this, on this lot. There's a large wetland right here. And what our client would like to do is separate this as a non-buildable parcel where the, where the wetlands are and create three buildable parcels, one with the existing house and two new parcels.
How many acres is the middle parcel?
This one right here?
One point three one.
One point three one.
So, Byron, the wetlands.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so the wetland parcel is gonna go to common ownership, is it gonna become an orphan basically?
We're not sure what's gonna happen with this yet, it may go with this lot or it may be offered in town.
Is that to reduce taxes, is that normal, you know, you try to reduce acreage to reduce taxes probably, right?
Yeah, I mean, that might be on their minds, yeah. So, there.
You might combine, did I hear that? Part of lot one with lot two?
No.
Near the calm.
Yeah. When they, when they sell lot one, they may ask the buyer if they also want.
Want to go in, okay.
Give them some more privacy. They have made a decision on that yet, that's just sort of what they're, what they're thinking about. So, all the lots would have adequate frontage and area for the zone. There are a few issues that need to be considered. There are ten percent slopes in this area here, obviously it doesn't affect this, this lot, this house already has a driveway. This one, the ten percent slopes end before the wetland and there's a, there's a car path that goes in here now, so there is practical access on this one. In regards to the access on this one, our opinion is if you look at the grades there, it's only about five or six feet at most. So, while the grades are steep, we think that's something that can be addressed, you know, in the, in the building process. The only other issue is that the site distance in this zone is three hundred and sixty feet and this lot here only has two hundred and seventy-five feet looking west of Wester Street.
So, you would propose altering on the town property?
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, it would be on the town property, however.
Point of access.
Yeah, I mean, in, in any case, if someone's building a house, they are, you know, effectively altering some town property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm thinking just the design to not affect anything that's over there.
They'd have the flexibility with the safety in working with the higher department.
Yeah.
For the, for the sight lines.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had to talk to John Ronald about a rock being in the way one time.
Yeah, and sometimes there's trees, it can be, you know, cleared out.
Or if it's a drainage issue, he'll have you put a culvert in before he signs a curb opening or something.
Pretty possible, yeah.
And you're talking twenty-five feet.
Is this area a zone?
Uh, this is a V R zone.
And these are private water, private sewer?
Yeah, be private water, private sewer.
Bill, any questions, comments?
Um, no, Byron addressed everything. Again, it's the only determination of the board on, you know, that, that slope on lot two because it goes in over the entire frontage and then the site distance on lot one.
So, two, two of those things.
Yeah. But, but all the other comments are addressed.
So, with the site distance, if you cut trees down, do we, do we look at the trees, is there a tree in the way or?
Uh, I'm not sure, I didn't measure the site distance myself, so I'm not sure what the, what heading is, whether it's, whether it's a slope, obviously it's not the direction of the road because it's pretty straight through here.
There's a little rise and a, there's a valley.
Yeah, so that's probably.
So, we did this on Vine Street, right, with the tree situation? And we got the tree taken down so that they had the sight line.
I'm not sure it's a tree though, I think it may be.
Elevation?
From where that lot is going towards Webster, it goes down and then comes back up again, the road itself.
Oh, the road itself, not the side of the.
Yeah, it's not decided to be the road itself.
Two or one.
Yeah.
It's on the road.
Okay.
I'm sure that's what that is.
I mean, we did have an issue with the sight line.
Was this the G U, G U property beforehand?
No, it's always been so.
Just asked a question this way. John, you guys signed off on that one. I think Ernie had some input on, on the site distance on that Pine Street one, Hester?
Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I think that was Vine Street, I think that was okay because we talked about when they go to point, when they access the property. Yeah.
No.
I was actually surprised that he, he didn't get the site distance because it's relatively straight out there. What was the limitation?
There's a little valley, Bill, right there, when you turn at the blinking light, turn going towards Webster, right above where Pat's house is, the original structure, just before that.
I see.
The, the road dips and then comes back up again, so you might lose sight of a chi in that little valley, maybe that's not so much, but.
People who know the road know that this is offside at the other road.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Make a motion?
Make a motion to endorse the A and R for Patricia and Manning. Twenty-seven Webster Street.
Second.
By Mike Z, seconded by Tracy, any further discussion? All in favor, high, low, abstain, the motion carries. Do you have a bylaw for us?
Which monument did you bear about here Byron?
What's that?
Which monument did you hold? You got all these bubbles up here.
I know, there was a lot of things that were just a little bit off.
I have some ideas about that.
What's that?
I have some ideas.
What's going on?
Yeah. Yeah, I think a lot of them are clocked for ourselves.
If you need them in the.
Gold goes as a monument.
Les, could you put that on top of this one?
Yep. See that? Yep. We should just hand you all our.
Well, I mean, you don't, you're gonna have another tour, do you?
Well, it's just.
Waste does enough of that.
Turn, do the page turner?
I'll turn.
You wish they hadn't got a.
That's it. Start there, Mike, and I'll go back.
Eight thirteen, double up with Mike.
Ooh, that didn't look good.
No, no, come down, come down.
You're too high.
You can't sit.
There's a guy out or is it a guy under there?
No, you're still too high.
Too high your way or too high my way? Let me just. No, you're too low, I'll go down here.
It's okay, it's just for office use only and I thought we were doing the standing with one copy.
Want me to hit it for you?
We were.
Let's try it again.
There you go.
We talked about that last meeting.
Once we get in the next meeting, it'll be good.
Do you wanna do that?
That's fine.
And then all the other departments get, um, the email.
I did bring that up, I didn't check with all the departments, are you over there? Building wants a hard copy.
She does.
Building department.
Yeah.
Where do you go? We need a hard copy.
Yeah.
Not that I'm gonna look for, but where do you go?
I didn't talk about.
Yeah, you gotta, put it right there.
Aren't you compiling a database of projects?
No, you're good, you're good, no.
Can't we just like print it out?
You gotta, yeah.
Is that my name? I can't tell if it's upside down.
Yeah, he's still.
Yeah, right.
Mike, are you a double stamper?
Yeah, we have good field. Right there, Mike.
I'll do it, I gotta date him anyway.
Update that bylaw.
Too many copies.
That's not in the bylaw. Send an electronic one. The number of copies. We haven't updated our bylaws in like ten years.
We're gonna leave pieces of paper in the town hall.
If you get something in the next, we can have. As you said, they.
We're killing trees.
All right, we'll see, we'll go from there. I just don't wanna lose my.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Do you have work, Hill?
Yeah, me collectively.
You know what, you know what the twenty-five year anniversary gift is?
Wood?
Nope, I'm gonna get you a four drawer file cabinet.
Several?
Get me a flat file.
Yeah, those are nice.
Is it?
A four drawer.
That's you, draw stand except for the signature.
Byron, you good?
Four copies, right.
All right, we're good.
We need four copies, you did four.
Yeah, he had five.
We got four?
Yeah.
You did five, huh?
There's one to Pat. We're overworked.
Okay, thank you. All right, Byron.
Hey, Byron.
So, if we could take number four?
Or four. We're gonna take, uh, number four, next amp for us, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and we're gonna jump down and discussion, we have representative from Next Amp, one seventy West Street, on the solar array, so, okay, come on up, give your name. It's not on here, right?
No.
She's on here, on number four. This was a late revision to the agenda, late decision.
But I thought she would have redone it to get that in there.
She did. I don't know why you don't have the card, here. There you go.
I wrote it down on number eleven.
Oh, I have a notebook.
It's number four, one seventy.
So, this is not the current?
That is the card.
No, that's not, that's all.
It's, it's one seventy West Street.
You should have a letter in your packet from Julie, from Next Amp. That came in this afternoon.
So, just to give you some context, we had turned in some construction plans into the wrong office, I guess, Bill. So, Bill and Mark had some concerns about what we're do, or what we're planning on doing and I just wanna be very transparent about what our plans are.
Okay.
So, just to give you background, the SMART program, which is the state solar incentive program, is completely full at this point for National Grid, we're on the waitlist for this project. So, we've submitted everything, it's been through technical review, we're just waiting for space to open. That could happen anytime between now and the end of the year. So, as Tracy knows, we have a window that our order of the Conservation Commission to build the wetland crossing before the end of September. So, what we would like to do is build the road and the wetland crossing and then stop and we're essentially asking for a partial building permit to just do that work on the Gattery property. We're not gonna be doing any clearing inside the site, we're just going thirty feet past that wetland crossing.
So, here's the issue. The decision contains some language, the Chesbrough piece, which is part of the project, is subject to chapter sixty-one A, I believe.
Correct.
And as, as such, it requires the town's right of first refusal process to go through.
Right.
I've been asking Julie, you know, let's get the ball rolling on this for a while and that's not occurred. It is a condition in the decision that that occur before any construction commences.
Which it has to.
Okay, so.
What do you need a building permit for?
We don't really, that's, I mean, we're trying to.
So, you can, I mean, generally speaking, if they've got an order of conditions, they're permitted to make a roadway.
They got a site plan review permit from this committee.
Yeah.
And that site plan review permit has a condition in it that says no construction is to commence until they go through the chapter sixty-one A process.
They're not constructing if they're cutting, cutting a road in?
You can't, I don't think you can.
Well, under sixty-one A, can't you gain access by putting a road in? Can't you still, under sixty-one A, can't you construct a roadway into the land?
We're just not under sixty-one A jurisdiction on this property, on the Gattery property.
Right, but it's part of the project, so it's associated, you wouldn't necessarily have to build this roadway if you weren't building panels on the Chesbrough piece.
I understand, but our plan would be to come back and get a, a building permit for the actual array and the actual construction.
I think it don't work soon, I don't know.
Releasing it.
I'm sure it'll get released, so I don't know what the delay is, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, it's the, the sooner that the landlord would have to pay the back taxes and everything associated, yeah.
Yeah, bring it forward for ten years.
When do you take it out?
So, I'm just.
But only on that piece that, yeah, well, the portion.
So, as far as, they're not, they're constructing the access which would be associated with our site plan review, that's what you're saying?
Yes, it's part of the project.
Okay, but they could do that anyway without the site, site plan review.
It's part of the project, they're building it for the project.
So, they would have to request a modification to the site plan?
Correct.
Approval?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I just want you to understand the full scope of what the issue is, okay?
Four, four.
We can do a modification, that's, that's the simplest way to do it if we want to allow this to happen, yes.
I don't really see a harm in it, I mean, there, it's their risk if they don't ever get into the SMART program, you've gotta build a lot, pretty much.
I would say go for the modification and I don't have a problem with them putting a road.
Right, I don't, as long as, as long as it's all covered and do a modification.
And they're obviously not gonna do any other construction, panels or anything unless they.
Well, there's no program.
Well, let's set some parameters then as to what qualifies here.
Definitely, yeah.
Because I'm a little fuzzy on the scope and extent of what Julie wants to construct.
I'm just discussing the process of how we could allow it to happen if we, if we wanted.
Could we have a drawing?
We'll need a scope, we'll need a scope of the work, everything on the modification, so we know what's going on, right?
Has already, right?
Mark has the full set of construction drawings, including the solar panels.
So, we need to have some, show just what you plan on doing.
Phase one panels.
Like you said, phase one, you said the scope of the work, which is the driveway end, the wetlands crossing, and then you stop. We'll need that on a plan.
And you're taking out the replication area and building a bridge too, right?
And you basically would call that phase one, stop, and then phase two would be?
Do you wanna say only the road construction up to a maximum of a hundred feet from the wetland? So, basically they get their crossing done?
They need to do replication also, yeah. So, they need to take out the replication, I believe so.
See, this is what I'm saying, I don't know what the full scope.
I would say, I have everything that's permitted under the order, because that's, that's only that part, that front part. Nothing else in the back is under the order.
You're gonna provide a scope.
Yeah, well, the, the sequence, the wetland sequence is on that page that I referenced in the letter, so that, that would be the whole scope.
And, yeah, I mean, you can give a length of where your, where your activity, your limit of activity is, you can give a, an actual length. It's not like you're gonna build the solar arrays roadway or anything.
No, they just wanna get the crossing done so they're ahead of the game.
Otherwise, we gotta wait till June.
Or you can build the subdivision. We need more housing.
We're not in that business.
It might be incentivized by the time that you're ready.
All right, so.
No, we should be ready by the end of the year, I'm hopeful, I just don't wanna miss this window.
The scope would be the length of the road and the wetland crossing and the order.
Replication.
The order of conditions from the, from the Conservation Commission saw that.
It would only, we would do the modification as only work under the existing order of conditions.
Yeah.
Up to that.
Certain distance.
Actually, you know, we only have jurisdiction on what she's talking about. So, the back part where the solar is going, we have nothing, so you could say the only, the activity under the order.
That's kinda what I was saying.
Sorry.
Within a hundred feet of the wetlands.
Yeah, I didn't know what you were talking about though.
Yeah, I was trying to define the limit of where they were gonna work, so I said, you know, get, get across the wetlands issues.
Yeah.
That gives them their access and then that doesn't start the solar panels, then it's there.
But I think you were stockpiling somewhere too, but that was within the.
That was in solar.
Between the street and the wetland, right?
Yeah.
I can't really, what you remember, we decided to stockpile the materials.
Oh, yeah.
Before the bridge.
Yeah, I thought we have an area for that laid out, yeah.
Because I thought one time we put it outside the hundred.
Yeah.
After the bridge, and then we moved it. And we moved it again, moved it outside.
I believe that the SMART program is full already. It's not even half as lucrative as the S R two.
Yeah, the Department of Energy, which has already drafted a plan though to add more space, so it shouldn't be a problem.
All right, so everybody's clear on what she's asking for, and Bill, you're, you've got.
I'm okay, I'm just pointing out what the issue is.
Yeah, so you're okay with that, as long as they come in with that plan and name that? Yeah, okay.
Okay, can we just clarify what's needed to submit and if it can, just time is our enemy right now, so.
Modify the plan.
I understand, but administratively, we have to come back to a hearing.
What she actually needs.
You, you have what you need from this board.
Yeah.
Work through me and Mark and we'll, we'll figure out the details.
Be an eighty-one W, is that, would it be a modification like that or?
No, 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 no. No, no.
Like a conditions modification.
Site plan review. It doesn't have to be that.
Yeah, okay.
We, I also want to touch on this briefly. We do have, I've gone through a couple iterations of the decommissioning estimate. And I shared the most recent, which I'm not satisfied with yet with Julie. So I want more detail, Julie wants more detail, and we're going to talk about where the values come. I can't answer your earlier question, she's objecting to the value. So we need detail in order to understand how they got there, basically.
That's all I'm asking for.
All right, so we're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you understand what we need?
Okay, yes.
Decommission.
With Bill and you.
Okay, yeah, all right, all right. I don't see that being a problem, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, coming in.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks.
Where are we going, Bill? Back to one?
All right, back to our again. That was number four we just took, right?
Yeah, number four. The parking.
All right, first item on discussion, classic envelope parking area, 120 Gilboa Street.
Okay, in your packet, we have correspondence from Town Council.
I appreciate that.
And we have a copy of the easement and the deed, which includes the easement language for your review.
I would like to request the signs be taken down.
Yes. Well, Bill, we got two copies in here, two letters, actually, right? So are we the owners?
We own the land, they have rights to the parking.
Are we the grantor or the grantee?
It's in there.
We're the grantor. We're the grantee. They gave it back to us, right, for back taxes or something?
Yeah, it was delinquent in taxes, so the town took the parcel.
So they have an easement to our land, and we are the grantor.
Correct. And now we have to also inspect the dam.
That's fine, too.
Good job.
So they have an easement to the parking, as long as there's parking, Bill, maybe the public can park there.
Yes.
Right, so if you get 40 fish in there and there's no parking, there's no parking.
Correct.
Whatever's left over.
Well, I mean, the town, town has the ability to decide what they want the park to be used for.
Right, right.
Whether you want to park on it or not, it's up to the town now, not up to somebody else.
We're talking about the parking.
Parking open to the public.
Parking lot across the street from them.
Across the.
One that was roped off for the longest time.
Yeah, and no signs or why are they not appropriate?
Take them down.
We own it, not them, so they can't post it.
People can park there.
But they have the easement, and that's all they have is an easement.
An easement to park there, an easement to park.
I mean, we're allowing them to park if available spaces, if available spaces. It doesn't mean they have exclusive right only and no one else does.
It's not a great easement.
Yeah. Not a great easement. I mean, if they've got the easement to use that hunk of asphalt for parking, why can they not put up, they don't want.
Let me ask a question. Really, in my opinion, it's really not the Planning Board's jurisdiction or authority to request signage be taken down or put up.
It's up to the town.
That should go through the Board of Selectmen appropriately. If there's any action that this board needs to take, I would suggest that it's a memo to the board making a recommendation.
Okay, could you please draft a memo to the Board of Selectmen?
I'll draft it for our next meeting.
Stating that the.
And then you can review it and then we'll send it off.
All it needs to state is that we'd like to request the signs be taken down, the no parking signs, as they're, they're not correct. They're actually.
Incorrect signage?
Yeah, incorrect signage.
Yeah.
I mean, it just needs to be one sentence.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to come to the next meeting.
No, I don't think so.
Moving on.
The removal of the.
Let's all draw something and Ernie can review and Town Council and then we'll send that.
Removal of the no parking sign.
Why is there easement?
Because we're nice.
What is, why are those signs, why do those signs need to come down?
At one point they own that.
Okay, they have the parking easement, right, for that whole area?
It says no parking, but Bill doesn't really want to discuss it here.
No. They don't have the right or the authority to post it.
Posting.
The town does. We have the right to post it, no parking. They don't have.
So their easement doesn't give them the right.
Doesn't title them to restrict it to anybody.
Yeah.
The town can only do that.
It's like the gas line going through your property, you're still allowed to use the land, but they have the right to dig up the pipe if they have to.
Correct.
Basically the same thing.
It was only an issue because somebody was questioning, can I park here? So it was brought to our attention, that's why we're addressing it, so that the public can be able to park there and feed the ducks or whatever, swans and fish.
I would have thought the easement they had would have given them the permission to park there, but not Tom Dick and Harry.
Okay, next.
It's addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Paul said, Bill? Okay, we'll do that. Medical Alternatives, 120 Gilboa Street.
So in your packet, it was requested at the last meeting, we had Fussin O'Neil here, you may recall. And it was requested that we furnish a, we request the Building Commissioner to furnish a letter as to why we were looking at the exterior improvements of the classic envelope building, 120 Bilboa. And so he did draft a letter, it's in your packet. So that's probably where we would start, take a look at that. In addition to that, you will see some photos. We did go on a site walk that was scheduled through their engineer in accordance with the site plan review decision. Want to be clear about that?
Yeah.
And so while the photos I am distributing tonight are small, I did email them to you, so you can click on those and they'll enlarge and you can get a good look as to what features are there. But generally speaking, and I don't want to be the one representing this, I would ask that the applicant, you know, address what the changes are. But, you know, the descriptions in the handout basically talk generally about what we discussed in the field, so you can use that as basis. Also in your packet is one of the response letters we did receive from Fussin O'Neil, and it gets into, and I'll read it. This is them speaking to my comment about the regulation that requires certain things. They say, "There are no exterior building or property modifications proposed with this submission, and as such, no other plans were deemed necessary. The application included a request to waive the requirements for the other types of plans detailed in Section 9.4.4 of the Douglas zoning bylaws as not applicable." So that's kind of how we got to the point we're at. The regs require that these things get submitted showing changes to the exterior of the building. They represented during the hearing that they were making no exterior improvements to the building. Therefore, they were granted waivers on that basis. And the board approved the project based on the fact that there was no exterior improvements to the building. The decision was issued, we didn't, we did not have specific language in the decision restricting exterior improvements to the building. But the information we have that was presented to the board basically implied there were no exterior improvements to the building. We got the feedback from, I guess the Building Commissioner got a complaint that, you know, exterior improvements were being made to the building. So he sent that to the Planning Board for our interpretation on whether or not the changes that the applicant will discuss warrant either a modification to the permit that was issued or it's not a significant change. So that's kind of what the decision is before the board.
Yep. All right, Les and I and Aaron went on the site walk with Bill.
There is definitely, I mean, you know, we can address whether or not.
Is it such as in here?
punitive or it's excessive or whatever, but there are definitely some exterior makeup or exhaust fans that are now placed on the facade of the building. The facade, I'm not talking particularly about the roof, but they are there. And then there's some exhausts right on the roof, which. You know, again, I said early that I don't consider, when you show facade, that exterior of the building is, not the rooftop, but there's clearly stuff on the facade. And I think it has to be some sort of talked about, whether it's modification, I'm not versed enough on that, but it's definitely there, so. And the lighting is also something that you wonder if, you know, it's pointed in a direction that is for just the use of security versus could it be adjusted or hoods or are they needed in certain areas? Or could it be, it was said, could it be put on the lights, light poles and facing the other way so it isn't facing the neighbors? I don't know.
So let me touch on that, Aaron, since you brought it up. With regard to the lighting, there was some discussion, I think we may have put that in your packet, I'm not sure if it made it. But there was discussion, there was a complaint filed with the Building Commissioner. The Building Commissioner issued a violation notice first, then basically was satisfied after information came in that there were no, no changes made to the lighting based on his analysis. So that's, that documentation should be in your packet. While we were on the site visit, it was the first time it was raised amongst us on the issue. So we didn't have the complete picture of what the Building Commissioner considered.
And we, when we went our site walk through, all the lighting fixtures that were attached to the building were aged appropriately, so there weren't new fixtures and stuff like that, so.
But they should be, as a neighbor, to make sure they got hoods or pointed in a direction that, I mean, just, that's not, they should be considered in a proper manner, not, not just out there.
Yeah. But does the lighting have anything to do with the project that happened?
But there was a complaint and the Building Inspector did address it.
And I assume that's outside our scope.
So outside our scope.
Okay.
And I think, I think we did discuss in the initial site plan review was they were changing the windows for closing those auto blocking out the windows, which is, has changed the facade exterior, which is what we discussed in our meeting. So there was, I think what we were talking about was, at the time, was regarding a solar and changes on the exterior. You know, not just the taking all the windows and they're, because that meets the security and safety protocols. That's why that second floor is all kind of, all brown, you know, all browned out with the windows, no window access to that area. The three ventilation items that we noticed that were to the left of the property, those were new and discussed. So I think we asked the engineer to give us a, kind of basically a 50-foot view, you know, rooftop view. What's, because there was some other new.
What's new, what this is.
Yeah, there was some other ventilation systems that's on the right side of the property towards the garage area. That was updated. Yeah. So I don't know if we captured that, but that's, I mean, it's on the opposite side of the smokestack, so. But we did see the power, you know, they're updating power to the building and stuff like that, which was the pad mounted in the back, which was, I think he raised concerns, but. Yeah, Aaron, you got pictures of it better?
Well, I mean, everything.
Thanks a lot.
You missed, you missed the backside tour. No, Bill took all the front pictures, then we went around back. And the back, to me, has nothing to do with anything.
No, no, there's no major change there.
Even those chillers are way back. My concern is what's near of the neighbors and sound and whatever else, and whether it was represented correctly in the application that came before us. And there are facade changes that should have been put there. I'm not trying to play one side or the other, the point is black and white. Was there changes? Yes, there were changes, and that's, architecturally, I can see that. And so now it's the pleasure of the board, but to do with that, you know, as far as modification or otherwise, you know, so.
I mean, I think we accept it as a board that they were taking the windows out and putting in the.
Blackout.
Blackouts and stuff like that.
That's the cannabis commission.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
But, I mean, we cover that as, as an acceptable change on the facade.
Right.
So that's, that's the catch 22 there.
I think the most, the neighbor's probably mostly concerned about, you know, smell from those exhaust and noise. I mean, that's pretty much it, I mean, they're not looking for the beauty of the building, it's not. It's an industrial building.
I'm not sure.
But there are changes, so, okay.
So the board has to decide.
But we knew there were going to be changes. Yeah, well, it said, they discussed.
They should have said that.
Yeah.
They didn't say that, they specifically said the opposite.
No changes.
So that's what confuses me, because there was this time spent in discussion about what they're going to have to do to treat their flu gases and all that stuff.
Yep.
We knew it was there, so why did we draft a decision saying nothing could be done?
Yeah, but I'm not speaking to the rooftop units per se. I'm speaking specifically black and white to the vernacular, you know, the actual fenestration of the building. There are changes on the, on the building facade. And that's really what I'm speaking of. I mean, I said it before, architecturally, someone says, show me the facade. When we show the facade, we don't show the rooftop units. And, and your point is correct, that rooftop units are expected in some degree. But as far as the wall goes, there are.
Especially in this case.
Our discussion with, what's his name, Bill?
Tim St. Germain.
That walked with us was that a plan for the modifications would be submitted and we would incorporate that into the site plan review. That's, that's the best, that's the best way to handle, I think, but it, the board members all have an opinion, so if anybody is in a disagreement with that, then.
No, I think, I think that's pretty cut and dry, because, you know, one of the things is, even though we said nothing, no change of the facade and something like that, we specifically covered that in our discussions.
We wanted a plan and, did we ask for the?
We asked.
We wanted the manufacturer's stats on the.
That's correct, on the decibels or an noise.
So they should come back with the facade, with the changes.
Yeah.
And what those are, those vents, and specifically what the manufacturer's, you know, stats are on, the decimal levels of exhaust and such, and obviously it's perfect now when they're new, but, you know, it's all we can go on.
But I want to be clear, the engineer offered that during the site walk. That was not necessarily.
Yeah, but we were coming back with one of the players in the board is, do we want that information? And is it warranting a modification of the plan?
I think it's.
Say that it does warrant a modification.
I think it does. But it's, you know, it's probably minor, but you know what, it's, you've got to be truthful.
It's going to be a big trail that's going up there on the roof and what's in the back, so.
And you can go, this is a Model 4A, say, you know, it's produced by this and the decimal level's this and it's this and it's, this is the toilets versus this is.
Yeah, we have anything back on them.
No, no, I know we have a couple of representatives here from the business, the applicant.
Do they have anything that they would like to add to our discussion?
Yes, thank you very much.
Let's listen up, we have your name and.
Yes, Jack Farron, I'm here representing Medical Alternative, which is now known as Resonate. And I have unfortunately six copies for you of the building plans that were submitted to the Building Inspector. These, these were not, these were not plans that were submitted to the Planning Board. In 2020 hindsight, they should have been, and we apologize for that. So if you flip, so these are plans that do show, you know, I think we're, we're really talking about, the only modification that people have concerns about are the three exhaust fans that are on the roof. I don't think anybody's concerned from what I hear. Nobody's concerned about anything other than those three.
That's not true.
No, the exhaust fans on the roof and the, your watering system in the back, the three outside units you put back there.
Okay, so I apologize. I thought earlier, a couple minutes ago, that I heard that, that you wanted updated plans, but that really the concern was about.
See these?
The exhaust.
These were not shown on the, apparently on the elevation, is that correct?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you said rooftop, so I didn't know if you meant also facade and rooftop, both, right?
No, 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 my mistake. I thought I heard something earlier that the main concern was the exhaust, but I apologize for mishearing that. So we also have some photos. And I understand you have some photos, these are a little bit larger. So we would just make, you know, we have to make the case that these are de minimis changes that you can.
What's de minimis?
I have to.
Little?
Yes, de minimis means very little, yes. So I have to take off my glasses in order to see those exhausts.
They're there, they're there.
But.
Glasses are.
No, no.
Let's, let's let him make this.
So, so they're absolutely there. And as I said, we should have included those in the first time we came in front of this board. And for that, you know, we'll submit new plans, if that's what you want. But we think that we should be able to move forward. What we're trying to do is open a facility that has jobs for people, it's going to pay taxes.
And we want that.
So we're, so we're just hoping that this doesn't slow down progress.
No, I don't see, I don't, as a board member, see any reason why it would slow down progress, but.
What's your timeline for completion?
There clearly are changes in, we just want, if the changes are incorporated into the plan.
Yes.
Would be a modification.
Yes, so if Fussin O'Neil offered to do a updated plan, we're happy to do that.
Yeah.
Happy to do whatever this board is looking for. We're going to be here a long time, we've always been good corporate citizens, who want to continue to be good corporate citizens, so whatever the pleasure of the board is, we're going to do.
All right, so it would, it would involve drawing, which you have here for the rooftop.
We have the drawings, right?
And for the units that you put out back, we want them incorporated in the plan also, showing that they're there now.
Yes.
And what was the other thing?
In the facade?
The facade of the building.
So.
Anybody need a copy?
With, with decibel levels and whatever, just everything that, you know, the more information is just good, it makes a level playing field, everybody understands, because we, I want you there. You know, we voted on it, we're not trying to stop it.
So there's no cease and desist.
No, no, no.
You're continuing to, on your merry way, what's your projected completion date?
About 30 days. So when, when is your next board meeting? We just want to make sure we're on the.
Nine, 10.
About 30 days.
Nine, 10.
Okay, so September 10th, we will get plans ahead of time, everybody who wants plans ahead of time, and.
Electronically in a hard copy would be great.
Yeah, Tim, Tim will be quarterbacking that, so he'll make sure that he interacts and gets you whatever you're looking for, and we'll hopefully get a vote approving that modification on September 10th.
So Bill, the three things you want, you want the facade, a plan, a plan showing what the changes are to the facade.
Yeah.
A plan showing the rooftop units.
Exhaust.
And what the, what the manufacturer's specs are on those as far as decibels and stuff like that, and on a plan showing the three units in the back.
You know, if you're, if you're under the gun for time, I would encourage you that if you identify a problem, whether it's noise or whatever.
Be proactive.
Be proactive and show some mitigation measures in advance, so that we really don't have, have to spend the time, you know, dealing with that.
And a simple thing.
Absolutely, absolutely, we'll, we'll interact with the town, we'll talk to you, we'll talk to the building inspector, we'll make sure everybody knows what the decibel levels are, you know, we're, we're being 100% transparent.
And all those rooftop units and the wall units, just tell us, put it, not just a model number, these exhaust this, in like just, you know, just pedestrian words, you know, this is what this does, this is an intake, this is a supply, this is what, just tell us on the plan, that's all.
Sure, sure.
The only way to do that is that's up there now, and what it does, and basically, you
know, the intake's taking clean air, so that.
Just tell us that then.
Okay, and, and the exhaust takes, takes materials mostly from the kitchen, where every restaurant in town has an exhaust, so.
But we want to know, is it a bathroom, is it an exhaust from what you're growing, is it a kitchen that you're preparing, we want to just know what it's from.
So the kitchen, basically.
Okay, well, put it on there, and that'd be great.
Yeah, as far as smells and.
You know, what kind of smell we getting?
To the property.
Is it cooked chickens, or is it, you know, you know, just an old marijuana, you know, that's fine.
So it's, it's a, it's a kitchen that makes gummies and other marijuana products, so that's what you're going to get out of that.
Because if there is a nuisance, we need to know what you gave us for the information, and then you've got to remedy it type of thing.
Absolutely, absolutely, and the CCC, you know, not only does the building code require much of this, but so does the CCC, so CCC doesn't want neighbors smelling marijuana or, you know, soap, that's.
So on your middle letter, what I would encourage you to do is basically give a summary and overview of what you're looking for, what action you're requesting, so it would be a modification to the existing permit that's been issued, if that's appropriate. Or if it's not, then justify why it's not a significant change.
No, no, we're going to, we're going to ask for modification, that's the sense of the board, that you want a modification to the site plan.
Yep, that's fine, yep.
It does, it may, or, it's a site plan review process, and correct me if I'm not right here, but I spoke with town council about this today, and the, the most conservative approach, there's no defined approach, that's driven by our local bylaws, our bylaws are silent on modifications, okay? There's no state guidance, there's no statutory requirement on this. It would be prudent and most conservative to go through the full process, nonetheless, it's not spelled out or required. If I may just add a takeaway on this, I lived across the street from, called Native Paperboard, the emissions issues under DEP, federal guidelines, were in favor of the neighbors, because we were in a residential zone across the street, and you cannot have emissions impact another zone. But here we're talking a zone that's the same zone, so I'm, I'm just saying that we need the information, but we do represent, I recognize it's within the same zone, it's all industrial.
Industrial zone, yeah. It's always been, it's always been industrial.
We, we get it, yeah.
Okay.
So much.
Anything else?
Nope, I don't think so.
All right, well, thank you all very much for your time, and we'll see you on September 10th.
Thank you for coming in.
Is there anyone else? Ernie, do you want to listen to neighbor email? Me?
Next item on the agenda.
I've been sleeping two nights in a row.
White reservoir states.
The neighbor is flagging you.
Yeah, Ernie, can we recognize the name, oh, just a.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, name and address, please.
Scott Duncan, 106 Gilboa Street.
Hey Scott, thank you.
There is major changes, they're not minute, you can see them from, although, you guys saw them from the property line, I was looking to see, we were talking about barrier, some type of barrier to block all that, that side of the building off, to, so you don't see that equipment, because there is more than just one piece of equipment with all that running at one time, it is going to generate some noise. Whether, you know, they give you brand new plans of sound, that doesn't mean 10 years down the road, sound like a car with a broken exhaust.
What other guidelines?
And then also.
Okay, let me just jump in on that point, sound is not regulated in our local zoning by law, sound is regulated by the DEP regulations, there would have to be a sound study performed in advance, and then after, and then that quantity would have to be compared from one to the other, to see if it meets the regulations. Again, that's not within our scope, that sound issue.
That would be Board of Health.
That would be Board of Health and DEP.
For a complaint.
Right.
And then also, as the zoning is, yes, it's industrial, but we're going to, you know, me and my neighbors are going to get together and have it, we're going to try to get it swapped to residential, like it should be, because the houses are, from 1860, they were there before the mill, so they were all millhouses all the way down the street.
That's cool, we can do it, great.
And then also, also, just, just so, you know, in case anything else pops up, there is documents with the, when they came to the Board of Selectmen, about expanding, you know, possibly to 100 square, 100,000 square feet.
Yeah.
I just want to make it, I have packets for everybody, so that you guys can see it, to make sure it's aware, you know, in case they have anything else.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's aware. Because.
No, that's fine, Scott.
Because the more equipment they add, the louder everything's going to get.
If they just, if they add 500 square feet or more, they would trigger site plan review again. Do this all over again from scratch, right?
So that would trigger, if they added 500 feet, it would trigger the site plan review process all over.
And then we've got another shot at it, right?
You have something you want to present to us, you said, for us, okay.
Well, I got, my neighbor wasn't able to come to the meeting tonight.
Okay.
He's away with family, so, there's all the packages, his email's on the top.
I think I put a copy of his email there.
And then there's also a Worcester magazine talking about, with them, expanding, I just want to make it sure, you know, the board knows, if they expand, then they're going to have to do something with noise, because at that point, it might be residential, if we can get the okay.
There'd be.
There is a requirement at the property lines for sound, any property line.
Yeah.
Not just different zones, same zone, what Aaron was talking about, it is a sound situation if there's a nuisance, and there will be, you can file a complaint with Board of Health, but it's like a specific decibel at your property line.
And measured there.
Yes, and that's an easy measurement to do.
That's why we're asking for the manufacturer's specs, so we know what.
So we have, but, like I said, 10 years down the road.
Yeah.
10 years, you go to the Board of Health, and they measure it, they measure it, and if it's not in compliance, they will, it will be, it will have to be fixed.
Okay, anything else, Scott?
No, that's it, I mean, have a good night.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right.
Number three?
Yeah, number three, white reservoirs, a release of covenant, watch two, three.
Three?
Number three?
Three.
White reservoir sticks.
I don't understand how this package works.
Good luck.
We're still.
Yeah, thanks a lot. It's in here somewhere.
Right there.
Yep. Oh, yeah, yeah, dig into it.
Oh, yeah, we've gotten someone on this, huh?
I got it.
Where is he? We're getting someone on this, right? Release of the covenants, right?
Yes, do you want me to present it, or did you want me to?
Yeah, I know, I was just trying to look at it.
Let's get this rolling.
All right, so before we address, I think what you're looking at, Bill, I don't know if you want to talk about the DEP email that you had sent off.
Sure.
With regards to the concrete that's on the property, so I think that that was determined to be in existence back in July, it was asked to be removed from the right of way, so it was just pushed and sort of marshaled into an area that ultimately is going to be set up for crushing, so it's not ripe for crushing at this point, just based on the development of the rest of the lots, so.
Is this the cul-de-sac, the pictures you sent?
Yes.
It has mixture of asphalt and concrete?
Yes. Let, let her finish.
But I just wanted to know what it was, yeah, okay.
So Fenari Development is going to be the entity that does the crushing, so Fenari, Lori Fenari's here tonight, I reached out to DEP, she didn't get anywhere this afternoon, but the plan is that within the 30 days requirement notice to the town, the crushing to begin, she will notify the appropriate parties, but again, not, not right at this moment to do anything.
There was no attempt to bury it.
Yes.
Okay, just, just so everyone understands that, the photos I sent, if you had a chance to see it, if you didn't, I have some copies in here somewhere, I don't know, you probably didn't see it, because they were out there. Oh, sorry. Actually, Maria pulled it in.
Okay.
I'll mention it.
I got them anyways.
Anyways, someone reported that there was dumping going on a few weeks back, that included concrete, asphalt, and rubble, okay? So we went up and took a look, and in fact, that was the first time I took photos and basically sent that out, let them know, and I also shared it with the building commissioner and the Board of Health, because ABC, asphalt, brick, and concrete, is considered a solid waste by the DEP, and it requires processing, and there's guidance documents that I shared with the applicant, about what, what controls that the DEP has regarding ABC rubble, concrete. So one of, and I do notice in, in the guidance document, that processing does not include processing on the site as it, as they're discussing, that's within the guidance document. You have to take it to an approved processing facility in order for it to be handled properly. Carded off the site. You, you can dispose of asphalt, brick, and concrete, but after it's been processed by an approved facility, okay? So I think it's great that they reached out to the DEP, one of the things that I've been trying to get, and, and is a written plan of action from them on what they're proposing to do. The initial discussion I had with them in the field was, they were going to take that material and push it out of the right of way, which then it really takes the planning board out of the mix technically, and it becomes an issue again for the Board of Health and/or the Building Department.
Off our jurisdiction.
But when, when we went back out today, I went out with Ernie and took some additional photos, Thursday I was told by Bob, Bob Pace, that in fact, that material was removed from the site, okay? So I was under the impression it was removed, we were on track to get the lot releases, and then, you know, and then I heard that in fact, it was not removed from the site, so I asked Ernie to go up there, and he took some additional photos, and in fact, it was not removed from the site, and it was not pushed out of the right of way, okay?
No, it was stockpiled, if it was going to be stockpiled, it'd be in piles, it's clearly pushed over the bank and buried.
That's Phil.
To hide it, you know, that's what.
So, so, you know, one of the things I was going to ask from, from the board was your authorization to reach out to the DEP and let them know of the situation that's going on up there. And number two, in terms of the lot releases, clearly, I didn't carry numbers for surety to handle this material, so my surety number is no longer what we discussed in the past, and therefore, I can't with the, with good conscience recommend releasing any lots until, until this is accounted for. This is, pushed it all back, that was too bad.
Question, just to the chair. Bill?
I'll get to you in a minute.
Was this material there from, or is this recent material, or was this there from a previous year's?
From other sites. It, it's come in recently, my understanding is from, from a demo project up in Worcester. You mean it was placed there? Yeah. Oh, God.
Trucked in and dumped, yeah. Name and address, please.
Bob Pace, I'm one of the owners of the project. Let me just, let me start by saying, I went down there, didn't see the material, didn't get out and inspect, I'm not trying to hide anything, okay, so, okay, that's.
Surprise to you too, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, okay, but, but, you know, I mean, but we had met with Bill, when Bill called sometime in July, we, we met the very next morning, okay, which was 10 o'clock in the morning, Lori Fenari, I called her, I said, Lori, you've got to come here for this, we met on site, okay, we said, we're going to get it out of the right of way, that's, that's what I remember, okay? So basically, I, I don't want to say that Bill is incorrect, but he's not incorrect, I just never saw it, okay? So I don't want anybody to think I'm, okay, I'm going to be here for a year or so, I don't need that kind of reputation.
Right.
Okay, so.
Who brought it on site, was it the?
Lori Fenari.
We did. We just didn't realize it needed to be six inch minus, that's all.
Yeah.
I, I didn't realize the regulations stated you couldn't bring it there and crush it, because I've got a ton of boulders up there that need to be crushed, so the thought was to use that, because he needs 8,500 cubic yards of fill, it's clean, it just needs to be crushed to a smaller size, we didn't think we did anything wrong, we weren't trying to hide it, it's, it's there, you can see it.
I'm, I'm not sure if, I know concrete can, you can consider clean fill, but I don't know about the asphalt.
If you read the DEP documents, they want it to be recycled.
If you reprocess it and put in the driveway area.
I think it's important, okay, for Lori to tell you where it came from, to, rather than, again, this wasn't a demo building.
No, no, it's a Worcester sidewalk project, so it's just old concrete sidewalks, no rebound, no metal.
But there's asphalt there too, I'm sorry, isn't there asphalt there, Bill?
There's a small amount of asphalt, again, it's reusable by DEP, it just needs to be crushed to a smaller size.
So, I mean, I, I think.
It was supposed to be ground up, right?
But it still has to be carded off in order to comply, or offsite.
No, you're bringing grinder there.
No.
We're going to bring a crusher there.
Great rule, regulations don't allow it to be done.
It's not our authority to say how they, how they comply with the regulations.
But it hasn't been done yet.
That's the DEP's authority, okay? It's a DEP regulated activity, okay? So I would suggest we just reach out to the DEP, let them know what's going on, and let them handle it.
I think we already did, I think Steve had followed up with this.
Disc? Oh, I don't know, did he?
I can't remember, at our last meeting. I can't remember at our last meeting.
Go ahead.
We would agree with that, okay? You know, the bottom line is, okay, you know, one of the things that, you know, I would suggest is, it's out of the right-of-way. So that's the, that's the.
But I disagree with that, Bob.
But let me just finish, okay? That was the bigger, the bigger concern, okay, when we first met, okay? Get it out of the right-of-way. It's out of my jurisdiction.
Correct.
Okay? So, okay, and I had, hey, again, I usually fall on the sword and I take every bit of blame all the time. In this particular case, okay, Lori says it's taken care of. I should have went out and walked around and just, you know, okay? But, you know, I mean, the bottom line is that I think, okay, I mean, if I was a board member, I'd say, you know, isolate it, okay? Put it in a pile, reach out to DEP.
Yeah, but it's DEP's call now, isn't it?
Reach out to DEP.
It's outside our scope.
I mean, they can't just come with the broom after and say, you know, let's just push it off, and now it never happened.
No, no.
You're not saying that.
We're saying that we should not do the covenant, which is under our jurisdiction, until.
Because it's in the right-of-way, so I got a very surety for it.
Right.
But is it in the right-of-way?
Well, it's not in the right-of-way.
No, that's the point we took it off. When did you take it off?
Yes, it's absolutely in the right-of-way. It's absolutely pushed over the end of the cul-de-sac. And if you haven't gone up to see it, if you don't get the grasp of it from the pitches, it's pieces of concrete, slabs of concrete, half the size of this table.
Yeah. I know, I get that.
Okay, it's still in the right-of-way. Let's get this clear.
Yes.
So they're saying no, they're saying yes. So it's in the right-of-way if it's up against the side of the cul-de-sac? Okay, so now, the surety number is not good anymore, so we can't release anything. Bill's suggesting not releasing anything until that rubble is taken care of, at least out of the right-of-way.
Shouldn't have been brought there.
You mean that?
We deal with clarity.
Well, what we got, we got.
Yeah. But I think, you know, whether the material is taken off-site, reprocessed, and brought back in, or is processed on-site, that has to get resolved outside of this board.
That's correct.
Exactly, outside of this board.
So we're just saying.
We can't release the cul-de-sac.
I'm saying.
Until out of the right-of-way.
My surety, I have to deal with that if they don't finish it. So I can't, in good conscience, recommend releasing lots.
I'm not disagreeing with Bill. I think this has to get resolved before we go forward.
Yeah.
Because at the end of the day is, you know, we have the obligation, you know, not the surety aspect of kindness, but also the obligation to, if someone buys a home here and tries to put a hole in.
Into the town.
Into the town as well.
Other requirements, yeah.
Correct. So I think, again, this can get resolved by either
Sure.
processing it on-site with approvals outside of this board's scope, or calling it somewhere else to be processed and brought back in. And those resources are available, you know, within this southern Worcester County area.
Yeah, but who's going to certify that it's been done correctly?
I think that's a discussion between.
So is there some type of?
But I think that's a discussion that Bill has to be involved in of like, what is the?
Which is why I suggested that the applicant provide a written description of what their plan of action is.
Yes.
And then, you know, that might go a long way as to measuring the progress as the lot releases continue and whatnot.
Does DEP come back with any certification that says it's processed? I mean, this is, meets the standards?
If the town sends a letter, I'm sure the DEP would reach out.
Right, and if that happens, and they satisfy, they're satisfied, DEP, do your surety numbers stay current? Once everybody else is satisfied?
They would submit, let's assume they increase the surety to deal with this material? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying if it gets taken care of to the satisfaction of DEP, does it change any numbers? I mean, it's just.
No, the numbers will be.
That's what I'm hoping that you don't have to.
Out of the right-of-way.
Give them an opportunity to do, fix what you got to fix.
Frankly, I think if they remove the material from the right-of-way, then it's no longer this board's problem.
That's another opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's another point.
Okay, can I request, I didn't mean to interrupt you right there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I request that we remove this material, okay? And, and, you know.
And then it's moved.
Right, and we already know we got to go through the DEP and so on and so forth. But, you know, okay, at least we get out of this purview. If you agree with that, okay? Then I guess I would suggest, okay, that I really don't want to wait till September to come back here and.
No, cutting the removal of the rubble out of the right-of-way. We could possibly do that, and Bill can hold, Bill can hold the covenant.
No, we've done this about three or four times already on this project, and quite frankly, you know, it becomes a juggling game. I'd like to formalize things at this point where they've come to the board for these requests, and it's now put on me to use my judgment to say they're good to go.
It's not a judgment call if the rubble is not in the right-of-way. We know where the right-of-way is, right? That's the only issue.
I mean, if you look at one of the photos, there was an erosion gully, okay? And you'll see buried under the soil is this material.
Correct.
Can I see the pictures?
Yeah, I think you need to look at them. I think the concern is, Bill, is that the material itself, no matter where it is on the site, doesn't meet the standard.
Correct.
There, it doesn't meet the standard.
The DEP's standard?
Yeah, for regrind material.
They're starting to dump.
Correct. For regrind material.
It's rubble.
Yeah, they're making that dump site.
For regrind material. So at that point, I think it has to be resolved. The material on the whole site has to be resolved because it's not going to meet, it's not like it's regrind concrete that was brought in that's of the same size that you put in a, you know, a slot basement area, or you put it in a driveway area. I mean, the problem is this is used to fill in areas, and now you're going to have a point of discovery at some point.
And it's not like a homeowner does it also, now these professionals, so they have to do this.
No.
So when were you notified?
These pictures are seven, some on 7/18.
I went out a day or two, perhaps after I was notified.
Yeah, our meeting was only 11.
And then when you notified them right away, like around July?
Yeah. Yeah, and they came right down, we had a conversation. I shared the DEP guidance with them, I also shared it with the building commissioner. I mean, I think I copied the board on this stuff too.
So why wasn't it moved from July 18th to the, to today?
And then I saw Bob Pace last Thursday, and I was told it was removed from the site.
Which I've explained, I went down there, looked at it, and took it out.
I mean.
I think a whole July 18th to August 13th, that was enough time to sort this out. We just moved it, we moved it last week. Moved it over the hill? Yes, we didn't understand that moving it off of the top where the cul-de-sac is is not good enough. Okay. Okay. I got you.
I don't think the material on the site, that's there now, should be accepted by this board in any way. That's there now.
Within the right-of-way.
No, on the site period. On the site period.
On the site. Because it's not grounded-up material.
Material that's supposed to go to a processing place and be processed, be approved.
On the DEP.
Be approved and then brought in.
Yeah, I mean, and.
And that's what has to happen.
I mean.
I agree with Terry.
I'm not, I mean, this is a real pickle, pickle that.
So let's close it up.
It shouldn't have been a pickle.
So, yeah, I got to go myself.
Man, make a suggestion.
You get up at like 5:00, don't you?
Go ahead.
I make a suggestion, I'm not trying to keep everybody in the light. Okay? Why don't we isolate the material, dig it out of the right-of-way, we'll put it in one pile, okay? So everybody knows what we're dealing with, okay? And, okay, at that point, okay, I'm not just trying to get out of this board, okay? That's, no, but that's what I'm hearing. Put it in one pile, then we'll work with DEP on that, okay? That doesn't change the surety, I'm trying to make this, I'm trying to minimize it.
At this point, I don't care if you dig it up and put it in a pile or not. We're going to notify DEP. You can leave it buried the way it is because they're going to know it's there anyway because we have the proof. Or you can dig it up and pile it there and let DEP look at it there, that way. But it's going to come out of there and it's going to go off-site and be processed, or it has to be processed. And then if you want to bring it back in, maybe, yeah.
They're working with DEP to process it on-site. I don't have a problem with the material.
You can't process it on-site.
That's back to the.
They think give us what he's.
Got to be processed and processed.
If the DEP says it's great, then it's no big deal.
If the DEP says fine, that's fine.
Outside of our right-of-way.
Well, yeah.
The whole entire right-of-way.
Right.
Do you want the ground product?
So, at this point, pass it off to DEP and see, and let them come up with a solution.
Yeah, we can't. I don't want to put on Bill. You know what? It's all done, get a DEP approval, and then I come back.
It was a suggestion. I need to watch them. They always get turned down.
No.
My suggestion.
Certified as well.
So Bill, that's.
Ernie? Yeah.
Who will notify DEP? You or Board of Health?
Board of Health copied the DEP on a letter they sent to the applicant.
Okay.
And I think it would be appropriate for us to just, you know, send a letter from the planning board also.
You can draft that and do that then?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so they'll get a letter from us, they'll get a letter from Board of Health, and they'll come out and inspect it and make a decision. Do you want them to make a decision?
No, we just want to inform them.
No, we're not making a decision, we're talking about the site.
Oh.
We're going to inform them, okay? That's, we're going to do that too. Okay, because we want to expedite this.
So, well, after we hear from DEP, we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Okay, again, I just, okay, Bill, I don't want you to ever think I lied to you, I just didn't want.
No, we're not going to go there. We're moving beyond that.
Did you, have you gone down and looked at the cul-de-sac? Have you been down there yet?
No, I, no, I.
Pick it right down.
Yeah, well, I'm going to go tomorrow.
Walk over the cul-de-sac and you'll see what we're talking about.
Show the pictures from today, right? Oh, there's pictures here from today.
Yeah.
The back picture. 8/13.
Get it straightened out, we'll move forward.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, for two seconds, go back to this parking area? Bill, so there's two emails from Jay.
While they're here, hey, Bob, I don't want to blindside you on this. In your packet also, while we're here, so it's a good opportunity to get clarification. They're requesting for two lot releases, okay? We have a modification to the flexible development special permit that was issued that goes over some things, but one thing it doesn't go over is the $5,000.
Well, we wanted to talk about that, yeah, we want to talk about a bunch of stuff, we want to continue.
I mean, that's up to the board.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, $5,000.
So basically, before the issuance of the second building permit, they're going to make a cash contribution to the town of $5,000.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So are you on track with that?
Yeah, we talked about that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We asked for the five acres, make a dog park.
The Concom five acres, yes.
Okay, do you want that as well before the sit?
If that's what the decision says, yeah.
What I'd really like, okay, is if we could get on more than a discussion so that we have it on the agenda, so I have some time.
Yep.
Okay? Where we can go over all of this stuff. We're going to reach out to the selectmen.
Let's do 7:15 next meeting, the night.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Just for two seconds.
Yeah, go ahead.
I found another email from Jay. So the one from August 5th says.
What progress?
This is the parking lot.
Parking lot?
Again. One. So he writes to you on August 5th, I assume that the town has taken the property that belonged to the grantee, therefore now owns the easement rights to the parking lot, and unrestricted town will be permitted to open the parking to the public.
Yeah, that, let me just give you a background. That was supposed to be taken out of that chain of email.
So I've spoken.
I requested my assistant to take that section of the email out. We had spoken with the board of selectmen prior on this matter, okay? With Jay, okay? So there's more details to that first email that you don't have.
Okay, so, but I only saw this email when I was saying like take down the signs.
And again, that was supposed to be taken out.
So then I see this one, and it's opposite.
Yeah, that one.
You don't have the complete picture on the first email.
Okay, I'll talk to you separately.
That's Bill.
Did you say that there was a letter that went out from DEP?
Which one was that?
To the applicant?
Not the one where.
August 5th.
Okay.
From Jay.
Thank you much, thank you so much.
Yeah, we got two different letters from Jay. Yeah.
Yeah.
One says with a grantor, one says with a grantee.
And I don't have the rate, I don't have the tax-taking deed. I just have a parking easement from, from the same person.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
We don't have the deed that was a tax-taking done on that, that property.
Okay, I put in what I thought was relevant for the discussion.
Was it formally taken?
Which talks about the easement.
For taxes?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, I'll ask Bill separately, I guess, about my.
Well, it's actually, it's the selectmen's.
The selectman talked about this a year ago, whenever that wire went up the first.
So I guess I still have the signs down?
When we brought it up first time.
That's what my problem is.
We all do.
Because I see the opposite, so.
Yeah, the letters contradict each other, yes. One says with a grantor, one says with a grantee. But don't, ignore those, yeah.
Yeah, just look at the last email from Jay.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Those should have been taken out of your packet.
We own it.
And it's not, I mean, I brought it up at our meeting because I thought it was part of the project for the site plan review, which it isn't, but I wanted to know what was going on with that parking lot. Actually, it's not our venue, it's the selectmen's venue.
But that discussion on site plan review was about the parking on the street. So it was all part of site plan review, which was all in front of us, boy.
Right.
Exactly.
So...
And it was broke off, and you couldn't service the town property stuff.
After that was all brought up.
So, you guys still want to write the memo?
Question's been finally answered.
The parking sign memo? No parking memo?
You want me to wait two weeks?
No.
Let's wait two weeks.
No.
This one is good or not good?
I mean, do they have the right to put up the no parking sign?
Just go by the last email on it.
Read Jay's last email.
The last email.
That addresses your questions.
Yeah.
Okay. So, can we go to item six? Okay. Let's go forward here.
Okay, sorry. There is someone in the audience, if we could take him.
Sure.
So, this has to do with Downs Road, the subdivision, and the accepted roadway. On the plans, it said monuments were to be set, and they were never set. So, there's no monuments for the first phase. So, I'm just wondering what happened, exactly how we accepted...
Downs Road, we took that.
The plans were done, but there's no money to do the monuments, setting the monuments.
This was fake... Just to give you a background.
Yeah.
Shady Knolls has four phases. Had four phases, like I said. Phase one was Downs Road. Phase two was Manzi Way. Phase three and four, I'm getting a little fuzzy on those, but four was the only phase that we had a cash surety, okay? Phases one, two, and three, we had a performance bond. And the performance bond was with a company based out of New York. And they went belly up. And Town Council told us, because they went belly up, we may put a claim in and may see 10 cents on the dollar, but we have to litigate it in New York to get that money. So, we actually used money from phase four to pay for the drafting of the plans that we did for the road layout and acceptance.
Can we get more money from phase four to set a couple monuments?
No. We're done.
There is no money.
There's no money. So, can we get...
Once it's accepted, it's done?
Money from anywhere over there. I mean, literally, nobody can stake out their house.
$5,000?
And this is the issue with inadequate surety.
Oh, yeah. Let me have that.
This is a great model for inadequate surety on these projects, okay? So, you know, everybody says I'm too strict with my numbers and whatnot.
Not one person? I didn't hear that.
Nobody says you're too strict with your numbers.
No one said that.
Who says you're too strict?
So, I think it's a real issue, and I'd like to explore other places that we did not put any monuments on.
Conservation Drive, that's another example.
I'd like to... I mean, it's a disservice to the town, to the people that live on these streets, that there is no monumentation for anybody to hang their hat on for miles.
Agreed.
Okay, so, I don't know if you could compile something, how difficult it would be, if I can grab that $5,000?
$5,000?
Yeah.
From Fenari?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No, you can't.
Why not?
You have no control over that $5,000. That goes to the general fund.
Can't I do a request?
If they make it out to the benefit of the town...
At Town Meeting, you can ask for appropriation of funds, yeah. As a board.
As a board.
I mean, I think we should compile what needs attention, what we can get away with to...
I mean, we have an expense budget, too. We could have somebody go look and come up with some dollar estimates on what it would take. But for me to go out from project to project to try and quantify which ones have bounds and which ones don't?
Oh, you want me to do that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. For the last 20 years that you've been here?
Yeah.
Which ones are promised monuments and never happen?
That was before you got here.
Though, all of those...
We have a list.
Let me just say, all of those were before my...
He's been here for 20 years.
Right, but the bonds were established before I started.
Conservation?
Well, I'd just like to say, I'm Jonathan Maxino, and I just bought 10 Downs Road.
Yep, congratulations.
Welcome to town.
Now, we did speak. So, my concern is that the abutters to my north on the South Street side have made encroachments toward my property that I can't delineate or define.
And probably within the right of way, so there's a good example of it.
And within the right of way.
If we set a bound, it would be over that wall.
They put in a rock wall along the side. All three of the property abutters on it. So, and in fact, one property owner has put down a nice beautiful slate walkway down into the property.
Saw your property?
And now, yeah, now I cannot define which mine.
So, people feel like undocumented...
And I empathize with you.
And the closest bound is actually in a guy's stone wall on South Street. The third or fourth person down is actually within the stone wall.
You can still get to these properties from those historic monuments.
From those DHs?
It might be a little further away. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess maybe request an estimate.
I also want to say, we did talk about this during the discussions on the ASBIL plans, and we talked about this, yeah.
I remember this, yeah, specifically.
Yeah, I think this comes up...
Wasn't brought to my attention as so much of an issue at the time.
Part of the problem is I'd like to build, you know, like a shed or whatever.
But you don't know where you like this.
Know where the hell the easement is along the property.
So, there's... Yeah, there's also a drain and easement.
Unfortunately, you're going to have to work in from the nearest monuments.
Where I don't know where the hell it is.
It's on the stone wall, within the stone wall on South Street.
Yeah, yeah. But, so, to Tracy's point, Bill, we work with other engineering companies and stuff like that. If we were to look at adding monuments in some areas that were...
Strategic.
Yeah, and, I mean, I'm not saying all, like, or fix one whole.
Yeah, no, not like every single one.
But if there's missing one for 2,000 feet, maybe we get one within the...
Correct. For an estimate from an engineering company to look at adding monuments and stuff like that, and then appropriate the funding.
I mean, consider this. Every year, you do a few for a project.
Right, right.
You know, maybe focus on Downs Road first, and then...
Work your way, and if you get, you know...
We're talking, one bound's going to be, for the town to do, is going to be $1,000.
Yeah.
Worth it. It's not bad. Little by little.
With the engineering?
With the engineer, yeah.
Oh, that's cheap, I guess.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
$1,000?
Yeah.
You know how many bounds we have to put in?
Yeah, I'm not talking putting them all in.
And would you use the same person that did the road layout if they're still in business?
They are.
Since they have the files?
I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
And that could be, I mean, if it's already been surveyed, they just take it, you know...
I mean, wouldn't he know what his property boundaries are from his deed?
No. There's nothing to hang your hat on for a mansion.
Well, did you build a new house?
Listen, the way it works is, the way it normally works is, when you do your individual property line surveys...
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Stakes are pins.
Mr. Maxino's property, he wants it surveyed. He's got to come in from fixed monuments that are established. And typically, these are along the roadways and the subdivisions.
Right.
These older projects, like, I can list probably a half a dozen of them, and have the same issue.
Yeah.
We have no funds to put these monuments in because the developers went belly up before the project was done, and there was inadequate money to finish the project. I mean, we're paving roads with that money, which I'm sure is a priority over setting the monuments.
But did we also hear from you that some walls have been built and some monuments may have been buried in that?
I don't even know that.
Yeah, but that's beyond us.
There's also a drain easement that the town has authority, and they don't know... They want to be able to access it. There's literally, like, no way to know where it is. And they couldn't even put something in there, put a fixture, if they need to fix something.
We typically don't bound the drain easements. I mean, we could start doing that. I like that idea, actually.
One sideline, it's a sideline.
I think that's a good way to hit the boundary.
Sideline of the property, not the other side.
No, I think all the borders of the easement should be bounded.
Right, because the deed has an even width, and you can measure off of it.
Yes, off of the one property line.
Right, you don't need to both.
So, I think, you know, I mean, for the benefit of time and stuff like that, if we could get an estimate of a number nine, nine monuments, and we looked at putting nine monuments in a year...
10 grand, whatever.
Something like that. What do we consider that? Because this is a way of rectifying a problem that we deal with, you know what I mean? And future boards would deal with by having...
What would you do? Make that on Town Warrant for a perennial thing?
Yeah, for the Planning Board.
A yearly...
Before we do it, why don't we get an estimate?
I would utilize your expense account. That's what I would suggest you do. You have an expense account.
How much is in our expense account?
A few thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, that's not much. If we wanted to tackle something like 10 monuments, we'd have to appropriate money at Town Meeting.
We would have to.
Or increase the budget, which has to be in a...
I mean, $2,000 is not much, and...
Doesn't go far.
Can we get an estimate from somebody to see what's really going on?
We just started our physical year, so I can't see...
See, the problem with that is, they got to go out and they got to know where they were set, whether or not they're set. It becomes time-consuming for someone to do that.
Like, if Andrews took a look at a plan knowing that there's a monument here, and we're looking for something here, could they give us an idea what it might cost to go ahead and set up?
They could, but that's not the issue, Mike. The issue is, like Downs Road, not just Downs Road, but Shady Knolls.
How far where they have to go.
Shady Knolls, how far they have to come in from. Which bounds are set, which ones aren't? I don't even know what the answer to that is.
You have to be 100% on it if you're going to do it. But you would utilize the people that laid out the street, so that would be less expensive than getting an estimate from...
Should be, but even those, even Downs Road was laid out how many years ago?
Oh.
Their control could have been a PK nail in the road. That could be gone.
Correct. So, is it worthwhile to maybe talk to Matt and figure out which way to go, whether it's increasing that expense budget with Planning Board, or to look at appropriation?
Well, I mean, if we get the $5,000 by the time Town Meeting comes, we can just put it on the warrant, grab $5,000, request for five monuments, up to five monuments or something. No?
You can do what you want.
You know, I think it's a discussion.
I like that.
He's only paying $5,000 for his...
Okay, so...
No, $20,000.
We'll certainly look into it and see what we can do, but...
That would be nice. I appreciate the board's assistance in this matter.
We'll try to come up with something, can't guarantee anything.
I just want to put a shed so I can put my lawn mower in.
Yeah. I hear you.
Well, as long as it's movable and under 200 square feet. You can put it anywhere.
I could.
No permit.
I want to go find something that I'm not supposed to.
You want to put it on somebody else's lawn?
They can help... You can use it with them. They can help. They can use it for storage. 200 square feet, you don't need a permit.
We'll see if there's anything.
I'll do about 10, that's pretty big.
I'll come back September 10th, maybe we'll put it as an agenda item.
Yeah, we'll try to get an estimate and see if we can move forward at least for the...
Next meeting.
Alright, next meeting.
Well, come on.
We're coming in.
That pays for the bonus lots. So, we're getting 20.
Are we?
So, Tracy, we're technically getting $20,000.
Yeah, total, but it's only... It's increments, and I don't think we're going to get $20,000 by the end of the year.
No. Alright, we're getting late here, and we've got too much other stuff to do, so...
I'll do the accessory apartment renewals.
Yeah, let's get some stuff done.
So, both of those look really good. They're just renewals, relatives, all boxes are checked, so I'd like to make a motion to renew the accessory apartments for 74 Pond Street and 14 Maryland Drive.
You guys always...
Okay, motion made.
That's fantastic.
Seconded by Mike G.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Always abstaining, move from Gary. We have two...
I'm getting less picky.
We have some ZK applications. Alright. Who wants to take one of those?
I'll take one to get off.
I'll take the whole one Wallace.
Alright. That's one for you. Who wants to take the other one?
I got 160 Wallace, I know I get what that is.
I'll take it. I'll take it.
Voucher?
Vouchers. I don't see any vouchers. I think I saw on the bike. This week I signed a voucher. These are the accessory apartments.
Oh, okay.
Mary's?
Are they signed?
We can start, yeah, we can start signing those, Tracy. You want?
Preston, a rear inside variance for sheds, two sheds.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What size are the sheds?
Uh, they're shown on the plan, so... The lower shed is four feet, you have to...
Let me sign that. Is that the Dudley one?
Yeah, I got Dudley, yeah, Dudley.
Yeah, that's the one that came in, the sheds on the other person's property, and it had some sentimental value.
The bed, is that what it was?
Yes.
Oh. I missed that.
They didn't want him over to tear it down or whatever. I'm not sure exactly what. We discussed this once, one other time.
Awesome.
Bill, I didn't see a voucher in here. I came in and signed one this week.
Is it? This is a...
I don't think we have one, Ernie.
It's yours.
No, no.
I don't think we have one.
I signed one this week. You weren't here. Where were you?
Vacation last week.
Check out. Might have been last week. Alright.
Hey, last, what do you think? Two sheds?
No. Residential compound, are we discussing them tonight?
Um, in your packet, there should be...
No.
No. A set of the residential compound regulations. I know we have talked in the past about maybe tweaking some of the requirements, given that it's a gravel driveway. So, I just simply distributed that, so maybe next meeting, if there's time, we can talk about it.
Yep, let's send out the email that's on the packet.
Sorry.
Alright. Be prepared to talk about it at the next meeting.
This is...
Dude, I don't have it. Meeting minutes. I got five pieces of something else. Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah. This is perfect for the Lake Forest situation.
Presidential?
This is right on Redwood Reservoir. It's required two acres zoning, and they've got a lot that's 5,100 square feet, 5,180. It's only 49 feet wide. And they're proposing to tear this house down and put a new house, and go closer to... And go closer to, well, actually, it's not very close, it's like they're going to maintain, but they're changing the position of this house. I don't have a problem with it, knowing that the fact that it's not.
Where is it, on the reservoir?
It's on Witten, White and Witten.
White and Reservoir.
Aren't they increasing the port area in their?
Yeah, they're actually coming closer to, to the water, to, they're before you, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is the one that's over by the dam?
No, this is Wallace Street. Wallace, Wallace cuts up by.
And they have a tight tank.
They're proposing one. They haven't gotten approval, so. And they're intensifying by adding a second story.
Right, right, and it doesn't show, you know, here's the perfect thing, having the adjacent houses shown on the plan. You know, because it creates.
You'd like to incorporate that into our zoning bylaws for a plan review for ZVA.
No, if you don't think there's enough information there, then write down, you can't need more information.
Yeah, I mean, as being a person who tore down a house and went through this process, I mean, it's going to be done in a very nice way, and it's better for the, the tight tank things, I don't know, it's about my judgment, so.
Is a cesspool allegedly not sound?
So Tracy, what do you, based on, what does conservation say on this? I mean, has it been decided upon?
Uh-uh.
Wow, so guys, this is it, that's the existing house dotted, and they're proposing that, so they're increasing the footprint?
Can I see that for a sec?
Yep, and they're going to be, I don't care what the underlying zoning is, it has nothing to do with this, the two acre thing. Right, this is.
Right, this is the point of the bylaw.
I don't know where this is, right on the street.
Um, I mean, I have no objection.
I have no objection.
I don't either.
The, uh, a lot of these old cabins, you guys have to see it happening, you see it in a long man job. The old, old cabins, they're taking them down and they're putting in newer.
Well, that's what we did, that's what we did, Mike, so you agree with that?
You agree with that?
And you get a better product, you get a safer house.
No objections.
All right, so this one here.
Put everything back in the packet, though.
Yeah, so this one here is about the, the battle of two sheds. Okay, um, one, so, one, one shed, one shed is, uh, four feet off the, off the back rail line, which is supposed to be a 25-foot setback, and the other one is, um, two feet.
How long they been there?
And what size are they?
Uh, doesn't say the size here, no. Uh, but it, the problem is, the, well, the lot's not non-conforming, so, the zoning, it's a 4,800 square foot, 48,000 square foot lot, so there's room there.
Is there a drawing of the layout?
Yeah, yeah, I'll share that with you guys.
No objection.
So there's.
You can, uh, I'll put you on the front page, should be, you should have a front page.
Propose property lines here.
There it is, right here.
There's the shed.
Why, why do you need to move the shed?
They're supposed to move the, yeah, move the shed.
Yeah.
Proposing a two-foot setback off the property line.
Is there an exemption on there?
It's on the other person's property line, right?
Yeah, the, the shed one is.
They want to get it on their side.
Shed one is.
The lady doesn't want, she's, she's worried about the insurance risk for her, and she wants it off her property. He doesn't want to move it because it has sentimental value, being, and he went with his father. So I don't, is he pressing to move it now, or is he asking for a variance? I mean, he can't ask you, it's something of his property.
He's going to move the shed right there.
They're going to move the shed, one, one shed over.
He wants to move it off her property?
Off her property, but, but the other one's on the property, too, and he's cutting the property.
There's lots of soul.
But proposed property line? Proposed property.
I guess I'm not getting my answers.
What's your question?
It's 18 by 8 feet.
No, that's a new one. Yeah, it's a, when they move it, it's bigger.
What's the bigger one?
The 750s are coming around.
This is the venue, 16 by 12.
How much is that?
16 by 12? 16 by 10, it's 160, and 16 times 2 is 32, so it's 192.
Yeah, so both of them don't need a building permit.
Yeah, um, it's not the building permit aspect, it's that it's on the property line.
It doesn't matter, does it? Needs to meet the, um, setbacks?
Yeah, you can't put something on the, right on the property line.
Why not? You don't need a building permit, all right?
Yeah, it's good math.
I guess I'm just confused, isn't this meeting all the requirements?
No.
Yeah.
We're getting the line.
Oh, there's the line?
There's the line, that's the other line, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was this one.
No, 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 no.
Let's not overcomplicate it.
Yeah, is he getting it off her property?
Let him move the shed.
No objection.
Yeah.
He's getting it off her property.
Everybody gets what they want.
Let him move it. Hey, Leslie, you signed it, but you didn't put it in favor.
No objection.
What? You signed this, but you didn't put it in favor.
If he's getting it off her property, I have no objection.
You signed this, but you didn't put it in favor.
Yeah.